This conference will now be recorded.
To get started this evening, we'll look at the consent agenda items. We have an addition to our typical ones, which is calling a special meeting for this council of August 2024 16:00. We want this to be called in terms of resolutions for a special election question. There's not many questions about those in particular, but we have a bunch of those all together. I did have one question on bill fees and that was regarding a 3,900 deposit of $1,000. I didn't know if my question was on that.
Yes, we just brought the question to secure a spot in the upcoming train building pretty quickly. They have reserved the spot for a kind of program, $1,000 really fundable. So we can secure a spot in that. Beyond detail of that, that's what I know.
And so that is committed to you, the program is just holding a spot in case it's worth.
Just a trading spot, so you can go to the trading and hang on this same kind of rinse and repeat as the first time I did this. So you reserve your spot, then you're going to go pick out your hang on everything and whatever charges are for that. I think all are in the program.
But that would come up during the budget. This would be approving that necessarily?
You'll have memo that will request these things because it's always in that.
Um, do you have any other questions? Yeah, everybody's. Yes. I, um, maybe I wasn't, don't need to know anything. Why could we not have this Monday at 5:00 with that with a conference? Just so everybody can, can I believe so?
It's the time.
Okay.
The protest petition for our charter ordinance, which exempts our debt related to facilities expires after 61 days. Then what we have to do is there are a number of resolutions that, there's a few resolutions that we have to go through process wise to say that we're going to holligate, we're going to have a bond issuance and that this, there will be an election held, a special election. So you'd be entertaining all of these things because we have to have it to the, to the calendar on September 3rd. There's not enough time, so we have to let one expire 61 days, have a meeting, submit by the 3rd, so the timing is there.
That is. Oh, absolutely. I thought, you know, we've done this before on the council meeting night. No problem. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I'll, I have a pure motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve your consent agenda item.
We have a motion from Councilman Schreiber, a second from Councilman Adcox, will it first please call on?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yep.
Blot.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next is item number two, request for comments from the public.
I do.
We've got comments or questions from the public, so to start off, you'll give your name and address. Uh, you'll have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a little signal to start wrapping it up.
This ain't gonna take long.
Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Steve Johnson, 507 High Avenue, or High Street, excuse me. Only thing I was curious about this particular segment of the meeting, is there a reason why it's here at this time? And, or could it be pushed back in later in the meeting? Because if there's questions or comments that come up during I'm sitting here in the meeting, I have to wait two weeks before I can bring it back up again. That's, that's what I'm requesting this time slot be moved down. So when we cover certain things, I have a concern, I'd like to express it here at the meeting, not asking for an answer of any sort, but that's what I'm after. Okay?
And, um, I want to make sure you're finished, so am I?
I'm finished.
So we can't respond directly during the public comment time, but we all address that later. So you kind of have an idea of why we do things the way we do.
Okay.
But I can't do it right now.
Okay.
Stick around, I'll get.
Okay. No, I just wanted to express myself.
Absolutely. Thank you for being on now.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the evening?
Red Brant, 1449 South 98th Street. I've got a couple of safety concerns on 98th Street. I think we need to have the street department or somebody look at. On the addition to the new groves, when the original applied for that, they said they would clear the road back 150 feet both sides. So you could see, well, people are coming out of there and they almost got to pull all the way out in the street before they could see either way. That's a big safety concern, I believe. And then at 1541 to 57 on the west side of the road, the water's washed out so bad. And I seen a guy hit with a trailer tire come off there and just about tore his trailer off the back of his truck. That needs to be addressed, I believe. Other than that, that's all I got. I believe it's between 1457 and 14, or 1441, or 1547 and 1541. The water comes out of their driveway and just washes right down and washes the road out. Okay?
Thank you.
No further comments, we will move to item number three, which is consider a bid award for roofing and repairs to park buildings.
Uh, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I'll, uh, Council, I'll call up Ryan Hudson.
It's all mine, no slide. As you all know, hail damage, storm came through several times, you had damage to several buildings. Parks being both the concession stand and the shelter were damaged from the hail. We've since received the funds from insurance for that. I reached out to three, four contractors to give estimates, bids on that. Three responded, the fourth one didn't. Those totals came back. I just hope there's something to help me. Don't quite remember what the amounts were. Thank you, sir. Came back with a total repair to the park and pavilion shelter of $12,680. That is replacing half of the sheeting. And the concession stand for additional $5,358.75 to replace all the shingles on those roofs there. The three bids were Radcliffe Enterprise for a total of $18,038.75. Lambert's Roofing for $24,360. And Herento Roofing for $30,631.70. We are asking to select Radcliffe Enterprises for the repair of the composite shingles on both the shelter and concession stand.
Would you, just giving an idea of the benefit of calling three individual companies instead of putting it out to a public bid to gather more competition and more investment?
I assumed that it was probably going to be under $10,000, not knowing structural damage and stuff like that. So I just went to typical three bids and then it came back in for more.
I haven't seen a roof under $10,000 in about 10 years. I just, I was a little bit surprised and I, I just, full disclosure, I've had people ask me, hey, I know you guys are doing this real soon. Where are they going to come to bid? And I said, I'm not going to give you, I'm not going to put your name in here. You'll have to watch for it to come to bid like everybody else. And so I was a little bit surprised to see that we could pick and choose on that. And would prefer, at least moving forward, that we would not set anything else public bid unless we're, unless it's going to be under $5,000 or something. Just to, just to make sure that we're not at this predicament. I think the more, more competition we bring in, the better bids will get. And you may have gotten, just may have stayed the same either way, but I think just for the optics.
Had we done something different, we would have selected the one that measures the land actually is here. So we didn't give anybody preferential treatment at all. If we put it on the website, it goes absolutely though. We have to call all those people to see if they want to bid. So this standard practice, we felt it was going to be around $9,800. But put it over, those other people, the other companies submitted a bid, so they did what they thought it could work. But the lower bid really comes into what we thought it might be. What puts it over that is the sheeting that has to be replaced. There's more damage, not just from the hailstorm, that thing's not going to take care of. So there's a little more damage in there, so we thought the best of the lowest competitive bid. If we have, if the policy is we give preferential treatment to someone who does business right here in Edwardville, their business is physical here. We can certainly do that, you just have to adopt the policy. So we weren't giving any preferential treatment because had that been, we would have selected the Edwardville. I'm going to just have the business license, but they actually have the business right there.
And I think the preference would just be that if anytime we're just picking three or four to call, since we didn't call everyone with a business license, then we gave preference to the three or four, obviously, because the others didn't have a chance. Um, so just, and if we need to adopt a policy, that would be fine. But I think anytime we can post it publicly and then people will have to know, hey, you got to check the website or you need to check whatever site for those. And then we can always invite people to, to be a part of the process.
I just think they're asking me to understand that if we put it on the webpage, we still have to call and get at least three bids. And then if they need to be sealed deals, because we don't get a response or whatever, or it's a fairly large project, then we'll do that as well. But the sealed deals, of course, those, those bigger projects, for example, the ones with different contractors' web page. If we can link it to that, we just can't. Some of those documents are very big and we can't put them on the website, it's too big. So we're trying to balance out which, which we can do it. The way we handle this is the way we've done it since they hired me in 2007, this hasn't changed at all. And if you go back and look at the financial policy, we did it exactly like that. This is before you because it was over $10,000. We followed that. So if we want to change it, we can give you the documents, it does some language to change it, but it's going to take a vote of this body to get that.
And I think just moving forward, that might be something we could look at. I don't know that that's something we need to do for now. I think we've got some good bits in front of us. Have we used Radcliffe before?
I don't know for city politics, but I believe they are licensed in.
Shawnee.
We don't know if they're licensed or not?
Well, I don't know personally.
They are, they are, they are licensed. They, they've done roofs through here, yes.
What was the insurance check for?
I, I don't want to give you a number without looking at the sheet. What's confusing about it is it's kind of, they, they listed all the buildings and they just kind of handed us a check they said for the value. But they, they didn't put a price on those and quite frankly, I haven't on my desk.
Per, per the building, it was less because of proration on the composite shingles.
I guess what I'm not understanding, how is it $6,000, $6,000, $6,000? What, what kind of spec sheets did they give for that? Like what kind of, how is there $6,000 difference for $12,000 between the bottom and the top? It just seems, that just, that sounds cheap to me, like maybe they're not going to be using the right kind of. My house is $28,000 and it's not any bigger than the park shelter. Is there a macro mention for that?
Brian works with the company.
I gave them all the three tab, 30-year warranty on the shingles. Lambert did throw an option in there to go with the 50-year, but that was not in this price. He gave me two different prices. This, these prices right here are three tab, 30, 30-year warranty with felt and drip edge.
Did they, did they get in and actually put up with the sheeting on that park shelter?
On the park shelter, yes. The Radcliffe actually has in there that they're replacing 10 sheets. Lambert's and Herento are basically saying any sheets after that would be $80 a sheet. So Radcliffe did say that they were taking 10 sheets out. So you've got 10 sheets in that price of getting replaced. If there's more, once they do it, it'll be additional 60 to them.
You said three tab, architectural shingles are like a DAF timber line, laminated ones?
Right.
So they're going to put three tabs on for 12 grand?
Yep.
Why are we not putting architectural shingles on what it says right here? A 30-year architectural shingle? Following. The, the architectural shingles last a lot longer than three tabs.
I'll have, I believe the bids were architectural. I thought it said three tab.
No, it should be, if it says architectural, it should be a laminated DAF. I think we have one of the mansions around here, the laminated, that's what it should be.
So if we included the verbiage of architectural shingle in the adoption, then, then that way that, what do you think changes? Well, how about?
Yeah, it's in the background right here, aren't they?
Yeah, I saw that too. That would be good to get that.
They also need to put down, not just felt, but they need to put, called weather watches, ice standing, that's required by law. Not trying to tell you how to do your job, it's been doing this forever.
Is that included in their base?
I gave them, I gave them the specs that we're following through with all of our residents as well.
I hear some stuff that's been, one that's been bringing this up, I might go ahead and make a motion to authorize city manager to enter into a contract with Radcliffe Enterprises for the replacement of park concession stand and shelter breach in the avenue, $18,000 per day.
Are you a motion? A motion from Councilman Malat, second from Councilman Adcox, will it first please call on?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Bishop.
Yes.
Blot.
Yes.
Moving on to item number four, considering ordinance 1074 and many rule 14 in chapter 1.03.311, rules and order of business, so like everybody's having any votes on the annual budget?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor, Council. What we have before you is item number four with background information. I was tasked with putting this together in kind of more of an educational, informative manner. Although there's not a staff recommendation here, this is all about how everybody does business. Therefore, it's your consideration and we're just here to inform you about what this ordinance will do and provide you that background. So in a sense, our code of ordinances defined what a governing body is, let's see if that's real. And if that coincides, matches the state statute definition, which in this former government, mayor or city council, is that the governing body includes the mayor. So the background here starts quite a long time ago, in 2012, we did charter out of certain state statutes. And that allowed us to somewhat, you don't charter anything, but change our former government to mayor, council, city manager, public voting. At about that same timeframe, what you see is a mayor began to vote on the budget. The public record certainly reflects that and that happened from absolutely from 2014 to 2022. And you know, the timing of things, Mayor Gaynor did vote on the 2022 budget, recall, may not. In 2023, that, that vote did not happen. And from all indications, just tracking the history of things, there was a pinned opinion from the then city attorney, essentially requested by staff to say how, why are we doing this, should it be done, that sort of thing? And then the end of conclusion was that the mayor should not be voting on, on the budget. And if you just look through some of the state statutes, that kind of does align with that particular opinion. So we've been formally been doing it, it doesn't negate anything. However, the request from Mayor Gaynor was that she preferred that, that piece of it. We considered other legislation that hadn't been getting traction, but this is certainly historic. It's the way we've been doing business without much complaint whatsoever, from my recall. But there was again this opinion requested and therefore that's changed. This ordinance particularly will address a couple of things. We have to do it by ordinance because the state statute says if you want to add a governing body vote and it doesn't already exist in your code of ordinances, you have to pass an ordinance to put it into effect. So 1074 is an ordinance which says it will change specifically the language and add, it's rule 14 of our code of ordinances under article 1.031 that point 011. But who doesn't make the vote of the governing body, considering the annual budget, we can change the phrase would say accept appropriation ordinance, which should, shall be the vote of the governing body. A section of that is highlighted in the attachment that is labeled ordinance number 1074. In section one, you see that italicized and in bold. That's where that will change. And other, what, what essentially says at section one is that when you're considering an ordinance, it's the vote of the city council. What we're doing is saying, except in cases where there's a vote on the budget, an appropriation ordinance, it will be the vote of a governing body, which by definition is the one. So essentially, that's what this will result in. If you approve it, this ordinance will go into effect and when we vote on the budget, it will be a vote of the governing body. One thing to note is there's six of you. Anything when you vote that results in a tie fails. If you vote on a budget, you like what you see, and three of you vote one way and three of you vote the opposite way, that results in a tie and that fails. So as the discussion of the veto, for example, it's somewhat the same result is that you will have to go and consider alternatives to the question, right? Consider something different than the budget you voted on, so that there can be consensus because the budget is required to be passed. It has to be a majority vote, right? So that, that would be really consequence vote, positive and negative, if you vote, you look at it that way. So and again, if you want the vote of the governing body on the budget, you have to pass ordinance 1074.
What about the veto? We're going to discuss that later. Veto powers, Mayor?
It's not on my agenda, it's on the agenda that's approved, so.
Just give a little clarity to that now. Anything that I vote on, I cannot veto.
Just in layman's terms, just in this layman's terms, so some people don't understand.
Okay.
There's a lot of people watching.
So repeat in layman's terms?
Kind of like, okay, this is, so this would make it so all six of them vote on the budget.
Yes.
I mean, I can see, I don't know. So, but it says accept appropriation ordinance, which has a vote of our governing body.
Yes.
Which means all of us.
Yes.
It's in our code, our ordinance, governing body, six of us. So my yes vote is for all six of us.
Correct. Correct. If, if we pose a budget, an annual budget to you, we say, what's the question? Do you want to approve this budget? All of you will have a vote under this change. Currently, only five of you, the city council, have that particular vote, five of us. You mentioned appropriation ordinance, I'm just still silent here, but in the interpretation of what an appropriation ordinance is, is that in form and or content, it doesn't have to say appropriation ordinance, but in form and or content, the budget is an appropriation.
So we're claiming what happens if there's a three to three.
Three to three results in a tie and it fails and then you must consider, you can vote the same way, you can consider new information.
Over again until somebody responds.
That's correct, that's correct. You will have to have a vote. Vote.
I'm making a motion to deny ordinance 1074. I'll second that. Motion to second to deny.
And just to clarify, this would be just the exact same process that Mayor McTaggart had every year when he was here. He was able to vote on the budget and that was really all I'd ever asked for, was the same vote as any member of this council on the budget. It also would resolve the issue of veto. So it was a compromise and a, I thought it was a pretty good solution. That be said, any other questions or?
Just because you break the rules for so many years, doesn't make it right. And I was here when you did, when you voted.
Well, they called on him to vote, it was consistent. It was our past practice and, yeah.
That doesn't mean it's right. Past practices only mean something to take care of. If you are in a grievance type or arbitration type hearing, we're not.
Will it first please call on?
Schreiber.
No.
Adcox.
No.
Mullen.
Bishop.
Yes.
Blot.
Yes.
So the motion, a motion to deny has failed?
I'm making a motion to second. Adcox. We have a motion. We have a motion from Councilman Adcox to, in a second, from Councilman Schreiber, will it first please call on?
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Yes.
Bishop.
No.
Mullen, or Mullen, Blot. I'll get it here.
Motion passed.
Move on to item number five, their staff presentation on 2025.
Okay, everybody, good evening. Mayor, we're just, you know, we are in now round three or four, talking about, you know, five bodies. So let me dive in. I'll first start with a review of a couple of things and then we'll talk about the revenue rate. Once in a while, I have a couple of slides on that, and then I'll spend some time on that. I then have a couple of slides for departments to talk through their budget. Talk to each of the department heads, we told them to come on and make a presentation and then answer any questions we might have. We told them to make a presentation brief and just be able to stand for any questions which they might have. And then if you have a last word or feedback, we'll look at how we might see any number of issues. As we have started each presentation, start with the overview of the calendar, what we've done and what the candidates can do. We have some on, on the table, that's, that is the rest. Reminder of our 2025 budget goals. We first reviewed that last time, you had Mary did capture leave. That's how I heard it, so we did add that and then the other one remained, remained the same in terms of what our budget goal was. We sold this slide last time as well, but I think if you're repeating that, it's worth it, because everybody's trying to understand how. Because I know as we left, we go, one thing you could ask about the most is your, your budget. Again, this is just how the, the new rate is translated into a dollar amount, which is that translated to profits. So we have Gary Shondberg, the successor, who goes, he's going to put $5,000. They go on that success, that 11.5%, which is 375%. And the new rate, that can basically profit actually from the, average house, obviously, this house is average. So some higher, some lower, but that's the, just a talking point. I know that all of you are aware of what the revenue rate is, but I'll just repeat that in a review, just to offer this. Those of you who have been around for a while, remember that it's something that has to be passed with it. Actually, I started, I did something called NUB, it was just a NUB that was ready to, we will probably have to get it off it. And then every week, we have ten, so we just say, we'll pass it. And then two million or so revenue rate. What that does, it's simple as for, it says if you want to do that, you should, you need to establish an amount. You can still profit taxes from it. So what happens is kind of, based on the assessment, we're putting in an assessment. There's your number that says if you set this no rate like, no rate, no rate rate, it will equate to approximately the same amount of profit tax dollars in each. Makes sense. Fair enough, so much. So that's how, that's, that's about as simple as I can break that down. So what you have on this slide is, uh, a lot of numbers, uh, there are a lot of people. Last year's valuation is on a hundred percent, thus. Which would be for the current budget. The valuation of all the property that was filled with 300. The preliminary number that gave service for 2025 is a hundred fifty. That's, so, you know, that's really, thankfully for all of us, it's up for people, that's right. So what that means, if you're right, please, one mill, and I know, I know we don't like to talk about those, but it has to be part of conversation. One mill is approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And then, you know, if you have math, a half a mill is half of that number. Those are some numbers you might be keeping in mind as we continue to work, we'll talk about the starting process. So the mill levy rate that you set for this year's budget, for 2024 budget, the mills that we have are. The traffic and neutral rate, in other words, the mills that you set, they give us the same amount of property tax for 2025, is thirty-six point two six. In other words, if we, if you adopted a mill rate of thirty-six point two six, it's generated that amount of property tax of. Makes sense? So if you can see it in this math, that's the change for what the mills for just about a half million dollars. Right? So we're not losing a half million dollars, but we're also not realizing that, of time, you know, the same, if you. Not pregnant that, not taking, stands on right now, we simply say, this is how. So what does that mean practically? What it means practically is if the mill rate on the house right now is forty-five, that goes to the property tax of three million dollars. And you adopt the revenue rate of thirty-six mills, it will be a property tax of three million dollars. Everyone, I don't want to say what you got, because I'm logically correct, but maybe this, you mentioned last year, it shows that it would decrease in the property tax. If you adopted a revenue rate that's not active, property tax is the same. With two, you know, with two asterisks on the hand when you come on, that is, it depends, right? Don't happen to your house, or in your individual house, if you had something, give it value, you assess that, if you are thirty-three percent, it will go down. I'm likely right, but I've never heard, it's come down in the last ten years, but I guess it's possible. Um, you know, some users, if the average house went up, it sets value thirty percent, and by definition, that means some are higher, and some are lower. So. So it doesn't make a difference in the property tax rate, because that would depend on your very specific individual situation. Makes sense? I might stop here, we'll ask this, give you any questions about this, it's, it's basically, you've heard it before, but also it's all complicated and complicated, so.
Explain the 495,000 you get on that, they are in, because I would always have.
Yeah, I think so. You're, you're doing math, that's not really. Yeah, it's not, it's probably good to be like.
I hope it is.
We're not having that chair.
So I say it's not like loss, because it's not like revenue that came up much that we had that goes with it. It's just unrealized, makes sense? So.
No.
Basically, if you lower the mill rate, we're getting the exact amount of property tax as we did before. If we kept the mill rate the same, we would get an additional about half a million dollars.
So if we keep the mill rate the same, we're raising taxes from last year by almost half a million dollars.
You are increasing revenue, but taxes stay the same. Mill rate stays the same.
The tax bill to our residents would be increased, if business and residents would be increased by about half a million dollars, if the mill rate stays the same.
Increased of this, that's, I mean, fundamentally, the same difference, right? It's still, you're one of the a one.
Right.
And I'm not trying to like argue semantics, but it really is not a semantics, because you would not be increasing taxes, because you have the body of the same. Mill rate exactly the same.
Well, but that is increasing taxes. I mean, that, I, as, as it, as it occurs to the, the folks sitting behind you that get their tax bill, and also we're, we're just regular people and we have numbers, and so, yes, we're keeping the mill rate the same, but we're the ones that determine the mill rate, so we're the ones that determine what their tax bill is going to be. And so if we keep the mill rate the same, we're not lowering the mill, or we're not raising the mill, but we are raising their mill. Ultimately, by almost half a million dollars.
Yeah, we will take in that additional revenue if the mill rates.
Okay.
And that's, that's why I say, it's not like loss, we can't necessarily just, if it was status quo, it would be an additional five million dollars. Uh, this, this is just, again, more, more short word to talk about. The mill levy rate for this year 2024 generated about two point nine million dollars, if you adopt the revenue rate. Also generate about two point nine million dollars. If you kept the mill rate the same, it would generate about three million dollars, you know, that difference of 100,000 dollars. And just, you know, to kind of put it in context, that is actually the entire level of profit if I run 100,000 dollars, about seven employees. And again, this is reminding her of the mill is about. And right now, obviously, I'm probably, right, we do the same order, there's a lot of. But I'm not trying to discount that, just trying to speak in generalities and specifically, so. Conversation, I know, but also.
What's the percentage of, uh, tax payers, the, the department, for, in the code, what's, I mean, in our city, what's, what's their percentage?
Sixty-one percent.
Word off. So it's sixty-one percent of.
Yeah.
When you, when you're saying that equates to seven employees, is that, would you explain that a little bit? Does that mean like, seven, if we are seven employees, that costs about five, three million dollars for their, and a bit of salary and everything? Yeah, okay.
And and this, I, I should have prepped this out, was that you were one of those agents, and it's your fact, it's right, and it's just trying to put dollars into practical terms. But I can't buy that, if, if you wanted to hire seven employees altogether, I would have no salary, benefits, salary, et cetera. Again, very general. Any questions on this, about anything on studies? So these are some of the budget assumptions that were made, and if you get, or if you get up, talk to you about those, the city budgets, in a general and specific context, but these are, uh, these are made as you work, with the budget together. Uh, I think it would be helpful if you, if you got any, so if you have any questions about that, I would call this mostly a status quo budget. You'll see what the department's present, or if you're not thinking, just sort of learning about any of the budgets, it's mostly just burning, uh, anything that you. Does not, we have talked about additional positions, that does not include the required administration or public relations positions. Uh, this does include, we're talking about part-time employees, really. And having another part-time employee, which is, but it's personal, so. Uh, early on, when you started to see stuff, did, um, you got a part of the mission, you know, that, that this is not even that. This is a, I think, a vote for that. So probably, uh, it's, that's what I'm doing, I'm trying to address that, if this part of the budget, I think, uh, certainly, which suggests that it's not, that'll, that'll be, so. Uh, frankly, it does not address general fund balance. But I said from the beginning, I want to eventually balance, but it's for the last five years, you had a bad budget. Kind of puts us in a bad situation, kind of minimum, I want to definitely balance, but it does that, but it doesn't do the end on your front balance. And you know that has sort of a circular impact, and then bond rates, and cash, and the issue bonds, they don't just look at a bond. That's not necessarily a big thing. Uh, the budget has presented with the same number of mills, with same number, uh, equalized productivity. Uh, so it's a, and then status quo budget, which we have, so. As we discussed, thirty percent increase in valuation, uh, does, the budget does assume a seven percent increase in sales back to 2023 actuarials. Um. You know, it's only about, so it's like, my next year, I can, I can, I based it on what I just tried to see right now. What we got in 2023, um, you know, at one point, we should have trained down this, this edge back up, and then the rocks on the floor, just. A little bit of guessing, and I'm just trying to get around to it, with this number of cents. And then it does believe a seven percent increase in the body of that appropriate. Or, okay, as you know, that, that is about the, the stat line, which people incorporate some of. Any questions about the, the assumptions, obviously, tend to them, and we tend to, it's been a function of what we've gone through.
How many years have we increased by approximately seven percent first of all? Like on a trend? Is that?
Well, it's seven percent point three, so if you look at, I'm probably at 25, I'm not, I would call that a three, it's a very long. We're fairly trending better with that right now. But it might could be a, you know, that's.
Does not address general fund balance concerns, so it'd be increased in general fund. And could you elaborate a little bit on the fire station room, that's because it's part of our building, um, bond venture?
And I would address that in my report, three minutes. If you change.
And then seven percent payroll increase, I think we did payroll increase last year, and year before, and year before, and year before. Um, I'm assuming you guys, we'll, we'll break that down a little bit, as far as how much is full, and how much is staff, and, and justify those numbers a little bit as well.
Yeah, well, we presented you with a balanced budget, and that's how we get it, is this is our, this is our ceiling, so then we work with that. So that's, that's what we heard from the, the notes of April seventh, when the council had talked about the budgetary discussion. Okay, let's, let's put our, we're offering a balanced budget, what, what are, what are those limits? So then, where have the final ones come out? Again, remember, we're early, you know, certain will be, it is to go.
Okay, uh, sorry, any, any additional questions on the assumptions or comments? Uh, that takes us into, and this, these are sort of the, the, the department didn't come through. Um, I'll, I'll take this first on, which is administration, I'll just kind of break it down for you to answer the questions. Uh, you can see it's, when we, uh, if we break all the divided line, I want to be two, four or five main categories. First of those, pain that fits, the second is contractual services, or things, or it should be contract value, or maybe it's an hour, or. Or maybe it is something like that. Uh, the other one, the other one is materials and services, uh, that's going to include general operating, and paper, some actual computers, um. But looking to pairs, that will come out there. Equipment is, is obviously, or we could be big in March, if they, again, smaller equipment. Uh, have a lot, if they lose March with high, um, purchases like vehicles, or those, they, they get building projects. Uh, and then transfers, this you need to administration, um. Given any of the other, so, that is transfers to like, uh, either operating on, you know, it's a, a lot of transfers. So you can see here that, um. There's an overall increase in budget acquisition, of, I'm going to say, doubtless, a large percentage increase for contractual services, which that is directly related. As you are aware, there's a lot of products right now, there's a lot of, so that, um, is reflected in. We just take that considering that's reflected in the 2025. I will then, when we, when full budget, we adopt the professional services, that would be, we'd go on to that one, I mean, it's just. So, projects, consultations, audits, extra audits, yeah. Retailers, it's perfect, I thought it was perfect, and we set one, two hundred.
Professional services, or under contractual services? Or is that, I just, I didn't know where that was called in this one, or if that's not on this chart?
So, yeah, I'm sorry, professional services is under, professional services is lying on there.
Okay. So this increase is about a mill and a half that we're looking at, if we're, if I'm, if I'm putting it right, could you just talk a little bit more about the increase in capital, how, since that's not the professional and contractual services?
It's, it's, it's just, um, it's a, it's a move, uh, it's just, it is. Eleven, thirty-two thousand, three, fifty thousand. That's one of those places that we, probably, we may make some modifications, probably that's the nice one.
In a sense that, we're judging the practical number, build a history, like go back to history, see what's been happening, there's some sort of event to a building, and they're pushing whatever, or not. Some sort of prepared, sort of some contingency, right, emergency, and so you could lower that to zero, but you may spend a hundred thousand, that's that. So in a sense, we're trying to capture at least something reasonable, so that there is earmark, and then you say, at least this is fair, that it does have. You could be surprised if you have a double, just an upper double.
And hold slower, to date this year, we expect, so, it may be much more, I think.
Oh, good question. I think that's a good question. So if we've spent nothing, and we had thirty-two thousand dollars earmarked to die, and not roll into the general fund to increase our general fund amount? And not roll into the general fund to increase our general fund amount.
Well, the answer is it's already in the general fund. So if we got to spend it, we're just thirty-two thousand dollars more pot. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, it's all, we're only talking about the general fund. Yes.
That's better. Thank you.
On the contractual service side, three hundred thirteen thousand dollars. How much is that?
It just depends. Some, we do, we do on-call services for engineering's design review committee for your planning and zoning. Able to bill us time and material. But you have projects that you commission the engineer, the same city engineer, to do other projects, which we don't have a fund for. For example, TA or the TE, which is the town center connector sidewalk project, that's a reimbursement resolution. Spend this money and then at some point when we fund the project through bond proceeds, we'll pay ourselves back. There has to be some sort of line item when we build that. Uh, our city attorney fee, they come out of there as well. Anything to do, our CPA, pretend, and then our auditor, which is also. Both of those come out of there. There's a number of things, contracted services. Then, then we have those things that we have to specialize in. So happens this year we need. Say, say we needed an architect that wasn't a part of the town center fund. Could you tell me that he would pay that out of that fund? It may not be pledged for that particular year, it's just something that happened. So professional service, contracted service, kind of go hand.
So the percentage of engineering is?
I guess.
Sixty percent of that.
Yeah. We have specialized projects and then we have any city project that needs any engineering, we commission those posts. Our city engineer to do that work.
But if you hire an engineer. Then he should have three hundred thirteen thousand. Well, sorry, just, just to be clear, sorry, back to be clear. Three hundred thirteen is all of the line items in contractual services. That includes professional services. And that's in it, that includes general services, that includes insurance. That includes. Other sections. I can say, I mean, if engineering seventy, eighty percent, three hundred thirteen thousand. No?
Of, of the professional services and or contract services line item, that would be, I can say. That includes all these other things, that's some of the sub-provability. Does that make sense? So.
So all the three, three hundred thirteen thousand is probably.
Yeah. There, there's more line items in that that reflect to that work, total to that three hundred thousand. Engineering is what it is, we have a number of projects required. But it is. But we can't do it in, internally cheaper. If that was the question, the answer is we cannot.
Seventy-eight percent of that, three thirteen to two to two. Right, thirty, thirty. All right. I don't want to say things.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions on the illustrations? Um, for the next, I will also take that one. You can see that the overall budget is about twenty thousand dollars. There's no additional staff, staff associated with it. Uh, one trend we have noticed, which is reflected in the budget, is. A change for opening fees, a change in fees to stay, trying to blow on both of those. I don't think it's going to grab you, it's also. So. On the revenue side, it's just kind of watch out. Lower that now. But also correspond on the extension side. Uh, and then the largest percent increase is in benefits and that's a.
How many staff? Do you have this? Do you have the budget? How many staff members?
Hold on.
So not to insult anybody's intelligence, everybody can read, so it shouldn't be a insult to sit there and reread numbers. But however, this budget pretty much stays the same. We're looking at a few modified changes. One, which is paying benefits, the biggest proposal on the changes besides the anticipated step and cola increase. Is a change in the education funding that has been a misalignment within the city policy for years. Currently firefighters are only paid if they have a degree in fire science or paramedicine. They'll answer their job when other employees are given their education incentive if they have a degree in business management. Or a degree in administration. Public administration, public management, which we were not. So myself and the city manager have talked about it since last August about righting the wrong. It was a contractual agreement from the old union days. That is the biggest agreement now that this is going to affect four new firefighters in the last year and a half. They're going to go from zero college incentive to the twelve hundred dollars for having a bachelor's degree that they were never paid for. Not back pay, just starting on January one. And two captains that were paid for an associate's degree that should have been paid for a bachelor's degree. That is the one biggest benefit that's going to sit there and change morale to be equally paid across for longevity employees. Two captains that have got fifteen and twenty-two years in the city. All right, we are not adding any additional staff. Contractual services went down almost five percent. That is a result in a change of the EMS billing company. Instead of the EMS billing company taking in ambulance revenue, sending us a check and us writing back a detailed bill for paying them ten percent for what they collect. They take off the top now and then transfer the rest of it to us. Which is allowing us to decrease now from about forty-seven thousand dollars anticipated this year. Which has now been reduced down to about forty-two thousand, going into twenty-five to about forty thousand dollars. Materials and services, this is just the cost of inflation. With everything else going up from utilities and everything else that we're seeing along the board. And then equipment. The biggest jump in there is going to be replacing of just the standard firefighter PPE. That is gone from twenty-six hundred dollars a set to fifty-four hundred dollars a set in the last three years. We've deferred that off, we try to sit there and get selective grants. This past year, we got two grants from the state fire marshal's office to cover two complete purchase prices to it. Um, that is the largest amount that we have got into the budget process. Although it did result in an eight point nine four percent increase in the budget, this is just the cost of inflation because everything has gone up. One of the largest costs that we have with materials and services is going to be vehicle replacement, not vehicle replacement, vehicle maintenance. We have an eleven-year-old truck over there now that is costing us about fifteen thousand dollars a year to maintain. Because an oil change is now getting to be six or seven hundred dollars. Tires are now costing us a thousand dollars a year on tire replacement. The next oldest truck is eight. The baby of the fleet, which is the next heaviest piece is now six years old. We've got a pumper, it's not to be looked at being replaced, it's a three-year build time. The cost is in two thousand fourteen, three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to build. Is now replacement cost for the same spec at almost nine hundred thousand dollars. That's going to be on the window that we're going to be presenting to the board. By the twenty-five budget process going into twenty-six that you're going to start looking at. Just to mark that on your calendar. But at this time, as Mr. Mathis alluded, this is not include the new roof that's anticipated in Eric, we took it out. Because that is being pulled aligned with the revitalization, rehab, remodel of the station, trying to prioritize that over into the bond measure products. Project that's going on, if that doesn't go, then we will look at having to readdress that. And as you saw, the price tag of the roof alone is what we're anticipating in just the overall increase. Of the fire department budget for everything that we're asking for, just the inflated cost for next year alone. So if there's any questions I have at this time, I will be more glad to answer them.
Any projections, remember we talked about this, I can't remember what I said. About, um, subbing down wildland fires from state, we learned that sort of thing from state. Are there any projections, how much will we reimburse so far this year, or is it anticipated? I know it's impossible to anticipate next year. We still.
Right now, we build out so far and the one response we had in the state of Kansas this year, we got a fifteen thousand dollar bill out to KDM. That has been processed, we're waiting on reimbursement for that. I've got two members that are out deployed right now without an engine, that'll just be a payroll reimbursement backend that are out right now. We are getting ready to mod up the engine once I can find an engine boss to go out. Um, that'll sit there and be anticipated, however, we have spent out so far, if you remember, we did put in the mitigation fees. So, so far this year, we've built out about seven thousand dollars that are working through the pipeline on the mitigation of the crash response fees. Um, we have received in a little over two thousand dollars of that backend revenue. We have not had any complaints of not having any insurance companies reboot. Or rebuttal the, uh, billings, it's just the process of working through the insurance claims on that mitigation response as well. That's part of that overall comprehensive portion to it. So we're still working on some of the logistics on that. I can't give you a narrowed down idea of what the overall response measures would be, but it comes into a staffing issue on an engine boss for the engine aspect on that. Vehicle replacement fund. Of. How much is in the?
We have some, I can pull for it. Sale of assets that we've done. We started, after we sold some assets last year, it started down from a hundred and four thousand. Were, were anywhere from two sixty-nine to about two eighty-nine. Probably a thousand, I think that's right. So strategically, we have been selling assets and then some of the reimbursement funds have gone in. There have been a few other things that have gone into relief, kind of reinforce that. Again, we, uh, we will also transfer. We will charge every department who has a payment that we lease most of our. And so that payment will come with the general fund supports of that. Their payment will come to the, the four twenty five, which is the useful equipment. Reserve fund, if you will. We're going to buy all of our pay for it, all of our vehicles out of the fund. We want to have a good fund balance so that at some point, then we can, we transfer this money, a little bit of time, we could reuse that. But, but the philosophy is the general fund should support the things that the general fund should support, but in balance, right? So we have this nice fund that has. Becoming a good balance, but we still need some rein, uh, some reimbursement to that fund from the general fund. So that then we can, eventually it'll be self-supported, it'll take a few years to do that. And that when we pay these lease payments, that are, we could pay them for one fund at some point, that'll be well enough funded. That we can sustain that over, over a period of time. So the whole goal is get that particular vehicle fund, if you will, just make it easy. Somewhat flush, so that it can start paying for itself, that's the whole goal.
It's well on its way, isn't it?
It's well on its way, yeah, we really, uh, I don't need to go back to history, but I asked for this for ten years and I think it's a good strategy and we worked it well. We immediately put a hundred and four thousand, we just been building from that, without sacrificing other places. So now, can we sell that much assets every year? The answer is no. Because we sold an ambulance and sold another thing. But can we sell some assets and put that in, plus shore up that account with general fund transfers? Because you know you've been paying for these vehicles that first parts through the general fund. Now, can we reduce that in the future? We sure could, and that's, that's the whole goal, that the burden of the general fund is less.
I have a question about the, well, you already answered one of my questions, which was the money that we're collecting from the new policy after an accident to absorb some of the, the funds. Between that sorts of revenue and the revenue with the reimbursement for the wildland fires. Does that money, can that money be used as a revenue stream to offset some of that two hundred thirty thousand dollars? Or does that just go to general fund, like, is that something we're keeping in prior?
That is the decision between the governing body and the direction of the city manager. So, uh, that.
There's actually some way, it will be received revenue, unless it's, it will be received to the general fund. And then we can make transfers, for example, if we send out a fire truck on a wildland fire. They reverse us for using that truck. One of the things that we're doing is putting that in that four twenty five, that, that, that reserve fund, so it's helping shore up that. But technically, it all is perceived, right, as revenue and it's accounted for as revenue. We've just been made transfers wherever. Now, if, if it's a policy of the body that says only this money can go to X, then, then we can do that. But essentially, uh, staff, someone has to decide, are we shoring up the general fund? Or do we, do we need to reimburse this expense over here, or I can transfer to these other funds to shore them up?
I think that might be something we could, um, dive into a little bit further, I know we need, do you need to shore up our general fund to get to that? Sixteen to eighteen percent mark. Uh, but, but once that's done, I do think it's, um, motivational to our different departments who are worth of, we're finding revenue streams in. And I think if that would be a great way to offset some of the needs in the fire department, I feel like there are one that needs. Our first responders need equipment pretty regularly into other than vehicles. Um, you can, well, I wonder if you know all about this, but I'm looking at equipment and knowing that, um, that stuff is crazy expensive. And so that might be a good way to, and I just find more information about those revenue streams and, and see if that could be. Helpful to offset the tax burden in the future.
Hello, Rance Quinn with the police department. So in looking at our budget, um, this is pretty much remains the same as last year. Uh, it removes an additional staff position that was previously approved, so we would not be getting that particular staff person. Uh, does not include a new roof for the, for the facility. Our largest increase is in materials and services, and I will say that, uh, that is pretty light. Uh, if it were up to me and I had an open checkbook, we would probably triple that amount. Reason I say that is in my short term here, I have quickly realized studying the facility. That expenditures go fast and our facility is in poor shape. Uh, for example, we just had a air conditioner in our evidence air property area that went, uh, complete. And it's twelve thousand five hundred dollars to replace that. Uh, our previous budget or our current budget now has five thousand dollars in our buildings and maintenance fund, so we were completely exhausting that. And we're having to pull money from somewhere else in our budget in order to get that repaired. Um, so if our budget had five thousand dollars to start. And we've already exhausted that, and I've only requested ten thousand for this next budget, you can see how quickly we would go through that. I have, uh, just about every corner of my building is rotting, soft spots in the floor. Every time it rains, I get a new, a new leak in the ceiling, and so just, I want you to know that. Ten thousand dollars isn't a big request or ask for this particular next budget. Um, I heard, uh, the, it was either the city manager or assistant city manager discuss, we haven't spent. The capital outlay money this year, that twelve thousand five hundred will come out of that, at least a portion of that from our budget. I also heard discussions on the cost of living increases that we've done the last several years here. I will say there was a study done prior to my arrival here in which the salary comparisons were done between our city and other jurisdictions of similar size. And what that allowed was to, uh, see where, where we were kind of sitting. And we've landed in middle of the pack, if you will. I will say, since I've been here, I had one application that was on my desk when I arrived. I've gotten one application since I've been here with a less than ideal candidate. And these other jurisdictions have continued to raise their, their salaries of their employees. So recruiting is, continues to be a big difficulty for law enforcement. And if we were to start talking about reducing those cost of living increases, uh, we're going to make difficult recruiting quite a bit more difficult for law enforcement. And so those are just some of the things that I wanted to kind of like highlight during my part of the presentation. Any questions, I'm happy to ask or answer what I can.
I have a question about the, which probably we're, um, waiting like fire department on the bond measure. Or is, I mean, is that, is this something that we have interest money to, to fix? Or is that just throwing good money after bad if the bond measure is through?
I would have to double, triple check on some of the buildings, so they paid all the cars and they paid some of the building, uh, claims. But I would, we would just have to double check whether the police department was included in the payment for those claims and I don't know if we have to.
I will say I was never notified. We were getting a new roof, so. I, I was happy to see that in the presentation, I guess.
It, it's very possible they will be getting insurance policy. I don't, I just don't know. Can they kind of send us money? Uh, the claims were, there were so many and it just took time to process those. City clerk and I will sit down and go through exactly what was paid. We did know that not just a couple of lease payments, that not all the claims were paid. So this is possible, but once it's on our radar, we will, we will pursue it. We don't want to make any rules. That's.
That's what I, I feel like is the theme. Cause we're hearing, um, you know, we, you know, we need some buildings, but everybody's got like, instead of, you know, we need to figure.
Thank you.
Well, everybody, I want to say first of all, thank you for letting me come be a part of this because I've been here 11 years and it's the first time I've ever seen our budget. So, uh, it's nice to know what's in there and what's not. Look at that percentage change, Margaret. Yeah. There we go. That's okay. It's a new standard. Um. I asked for one increase this year, and that's simply for, uh, increase in our park programs. Um, we currently have $20,000 in the park programs. I wanted to bump that because I want, uh, since I'm able to spearhead now the parks programs. We want to do things that are extremely unique, um, new, um, things like balloon glows. Things like we're doing for autumn fest that you see, some new programs, some adult programs. We've moved the fence in, as you guys know, want to put in, uh, wiffle ball, we're going to put in a wiffle ball league for this fall. Different things like that that do cost some money, but we're able to spend it on, uh, at the parks instead of things. We're spending it on programs and stuff for kids and adults to, to partake in. Um, the only other thing I think that went up, uh, was the contractual services at a substantial, any kind of substantial amount. And that's just the, the same thing. Everything breaks and everything costs a lot of money. Uh, about 60%, maybe 70% of, uh, my budget for, uh, repairs, uh, went to one contractor because of water breaks and, and all the stuff that we went through this winter and, and I mean, it was a, it's a big hit. So contractual services, if we get a little bit of an increase there, it will help offset some of that. Cause as, like everybody, our facilities are, are old and things happen. They just happen on their own. So those are, those are the big things. Now they're real rough. Yep. For sure. There's a lot of ideas. Uh, it takes money and space. And by moving that fence, another, another part of that was we freed up 60,000 square feet, a little bit over. We're able to now potentially put a field over there and start giving each season one of the fields a rest. Here's what we battle. We play in the spring, we play in the fall, and that's when you seed and that's when you water and that's when you get grass to grow. And so the only time we can grow it is to overseed in the winter, which gets us about 10% termination rate. And to do it in the summer, and we have no sprinkler systems. We have, you know, we go out with a John Deere with a tank on the back and try to water best we can. The best thing we found is that we let it grow up and we don't mow it. We let it seed itself and water as much as we can with some seed down as well. And that's brought it back as much as possible. But yeah, they're in terrible shape and they get used, which is what we want, but we, we need some fixes for it. There's a lot of things. The playground needs to be maybe updated or at least move, needs to be moved. I think it's a safety issue where it's at, some different things like that. So I can definitely do that.
As a staff, we've already tasked that, uh, so we know we're preparing some of the things. One of the paper, which is not a fund we're talking about yet, but we'll talk about in the future, the special sales tax. Parks is one of those departments that can spend out of that particular fund. And this group communicated, I think, pretty solidly that investing in what we have regarding our parks was a priority. I agree with that philosophy. I think it's not, we don't need to expand. We need to first take care of what we have. And I heard that as feedback. And so Mr. Martin and I have teed up to make sure that we're doing that. So he's bringing some of this capital investment that will take out of that special sales tax and will limit the priorities of the public safety. They've, they've been given the priority over the years. We're going to talk about streets in that fund and parks in that fund primarily. So that's, that's what I heard. And that's the direction we're taking and it's kind of been given the green light to put that wish list together.
I personally have noticed the improved park area. It just seems like there, between our public works and our park staff and, and the new administration staff that the park is just in much, much better condition than it has been a year from before. It just seems like there's a new, new motivation. Uh, it's getting mowed back further, benches are getting painted, the, um, like, like Mr. Martin talked about, the, the field fence getting moved back, opening up new spaces. I just feel like there's a new energy there. And so, um, it's, it's noticed by our, our community. And, um, even, even on, I see some great new ideas that are coming out.
Well, I appreciate, and first of all, I mean, I, I'll, I'll do this. I mean, Brian's one's responsible for that, hands down. Um, and that's because Brian also, as a public works director, is the first one that we've had here that is invested in parks. I mean, he grew up and playing for, filled the dream, playing at filled the dreams, coaching in a league that we ran, uh, with a private company. So Brian's a sports guy. So, and Brian also, one thing he recognizes that there's not a building, a facility and anything that gets utilized numbers wise more than our parks in the city. And it, it needs, it should be the top of the line, uh, at least in cleanly, not in Taj Mahal buildings, but in cleanliness and mowed down and taken care of and groomed and those things. Um, and so in the past, we've never had that kind of energy per, or person. Um, if you guys even remember, if you go back six years ago, it was me. There was nobody else to mow or anything. I did all of that along with my actual job. And so, yeah, I mean, I recognize it didn't, it wasn't good for a while because it was just a matter of man hours. Um, and so this was the perfect, I'm, and me and Brian are friends, but he has a perfect hire for parks. I was really excited to see him there. So that's why a lot of the changes are happening. Yes, for sure. No, I don't think so at all. As a matter of fact, that's one of the things will be on the kind of wishlist. I think we need two and we can do everything on two fields. Uh, Bonner plays everything. They just add a third field for the first time. They've only had two fields up there and they, they're a bigger program. They have more numbers. Um, we could definitely do it on two synthetics and it would, in the long run, it saves you money. Now, I'm not an expert on it, so don't ask me specifics on it right now, but I can get answers. Uh, but I know that in the long run, they save money just in pure man hours where they can go do other things. Um, it's little, there's some maintenance to it, but it's nothing like what we deal with now. Um, you know, the biggest thing we battle right now is establishing grass and keeping moles out of there. Yeah. Which is a problem for probably everybody sitting in this room. Yes, yeah.
You have to be careful of the ride away for the prayer. That's green, that sort of thing. So when you have something that you draw people to, rather than just visual seeing, they're going to it. We have to be careful about, if you remember what our house was, that was almost, so they have a lot of, they have, there's a lot of regulation that go with it. Uh, parks and board, shorten that, C P P S board, that's been an agenda item almost every time that we've met. And we're trying to get a good strategy of what to do, maybe something visual, uh, that kind of thing that maybe is, would be satisfied to everyone. That would show that we invested tangibly in that property and we're maintaining it, but wouldn't violate some of the ride away and some of these other easements that are there. Okay. I'm just going to draw your attention to the first line paying benefits. This sample drop. And you alluded to public works. You recall, our strategy was to take maintenance out of parks and put it back to the public works. So a team of people are doing this work strategically. That was, we purposely did it that way. Some reservation, uh, just because of past experience, but it's worked really well. We have the right people in the right place.
So the only thing I ask is you don't let him resign before I, before I retire. So. All right. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel pretty special with some of those comments and me getting my second opportunity to come up and speak to you all. So thank you for that. You've heard from the other three big departments in here and, and I hope mine goes over just as well. There is a slight increase, um, in the public works, uh, budget. A lot of that is based on material cost, um, from, from being able to do more maintenance to the streets, sidewalks, um, parks, cemetery and all that. We're seeing a material cost on it. Um, also some of that increase is the increase for, uh, personal protection equipment. Um, for the additional employees, that cost is going up and just getting us close to our standards of what we should have um, for protection of our employees. Um, also with, uh, the increase of, of taking on that other, um, employee, parks employee and, and grouping it together. Um, it, it only made sense to do that, um, to put us all public works maintaining everything as you can work in crews, you can get stuff done a lot quicker. If you get behind, you can, you can throw all your resources at it. So, um, that is the, the big, uh, majority of the increases there. Um, equipment, um, you know, our two frontline snow trucks are, uh, the newest one is a 2018. It's starting to get some age on it. Um, maintenance on those, uh, one ton trucks and the snow equipment can get pretty expensive and it is probably seeing almost a 33% increase, um, on some of those repairs at all. Um, mileage of, we're getting up there where we're having to start replacing basically tires every year on some type of piece of equipment. Um, some of our mowing equipment is getting, um, some age on it, um, to where it's, it's lasted past, I think one of them's 1998. Um, still works, but when a repair goes down, a repair goes down, it's, it's an expensive repair as well. Material services, there's a lot of work that can be done out there. Uh, calling for an increase to be able to go out there and touch more citizens and, and get to more repairs that need to be done out there as well, um, is where, was where a lot of that comes from. So I will take any questions if there is so. A, a lot of that material is based on the asphalt for filling the potholes. Um, a lot of it's also in snow removal. Um, the, the I know, I know a lot of people don't know it, but three years ago, you were looking at a salt shortage. Um, was it salt, was it storage or was it the manpower at the mines to getting it out? It just escalated that. Um, during COVID, the lower prices went back down because they were able to go work in the mines and it was murder seat, but we're starting to see an increase on that. Um, but with that, looking at some other alternatives, such as some anti-icing or, uh, pre-wetting solutions that can help reduce the salt down. There's a cost initiated with that, but you get a quicker response in your material out there. So weighing out that material, save some here, but spend some here, uh, can give you a cost increase in that. But a lot of the material and stuff is pretty much based off of the streets and sidewalks, taking care of maintaining those. This, the strategy of doing that has, has already, I have a lot of history on that. It's knowing with every's build being such a smaller town than what I am used to, or when I was producing it, I don't know what that cost actually is. Um, to, to be able to purchase that, but, uh, it's already on my radar to it, it, it only helps. It only helps. I've just got to get it implemented. Some, some of that's in equipment, getting what we have. What we have can do it for a minimal expense, but getting that, getting it put on, um, to where we can see the results of it. It, it's, it's already on my radar.
I think the focus of the question is that increase includes adding this particular equipment and the materials to your already existing fleet, so you can perform that service. Is that right?
Correct.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Can you tell me, as we saw by department, that overall would be differences from last year to this year? We saw the 495,000 was if we cut the mill levy level. Uh, I'm not sure that we saw how much to, and I may have just missed it or don't remember how much the actual budget or the revenue was last year. I think probably that was on the previous slide. Um, but how much did we just get requested over the last several slides, if that makes sense? I know one was negative, but the other ones were all additional revenue that were requested. What's that total? And this, that was just requested this year? So we're going to, unless we're raising the mill rate, we'll have to tighten that up.
Total expected expenses in the budget as presented is 8.3 million. All, I'm sorry, expected revenue from all sources is eight billion, 137,000. That will leave you about just a little less than $4,000 difference. So balanced budget, that's close to midnight. Plus minus, that leaves a cash balance of about 702,000 in the fund balance, which percentage wise, that's 8.4%. So I'm going to throw a number that you, reduce that one mill. And that reduces to the cash fund. All of this, as you saw or just heard, were about 8.3 in expenditures and 8.3 in revenue. That's a balanced budget. Hopefully will be 7.1% decrease of one mill. So what you need to get 15% is 1.25 in the cash. So how do we get there? So if you're 15%, what we're talking about is the cash on hand, on the end of savings. So how do we get to 15% when you're at 8% just a little percent? That's about any reduction. It's even harder. So you need, you almost need double. So you need cash, we're going to be at 700,000, need 1.4 million. You need to double that money to get the 15 plus percent. We need to double that money to get the fifteen point four percent.
Do you want us to tell you what the plan is? Get creative and
Yeah, I think that's our duty anyway, to, we're, we're giving you the budget that we can put together. Now, what we need is, where do you want to be? What's the priority? Is it revenue neutral? Is it fund balance, cash on hand? Is it, you know, is it, we reduce the staff, we can't hire the staff, so you can't put four people in the budget, you can, you're gonna go further. Uh, so that, we're just talking purely, okay? That's what we wanted to bring to you as a reality. Mr. Malotti said, don't put the sparkles in, right? We're not putting any sparkles. What we're saying to you is, the reality is you're gonna be about eight percent, which once again, year after year, it's on going. Fourteen, thirteen, twelve, eight, that's the term we're going to. So Doug has come in too, in, in a sense that what we need is some feedback as to, and this is our job to present you, to give you a different scenario, but the question is where we need to go, revenue neutral? Uh, where do we need to go from there? What would you like to see more practical? Maybe it's a one, one mill reduction. All of this is what you've seen, is there something that you would like us to bring to the table next time? In addition to these other funds that you will see and their performance and what we should budget for that?
Oh.
I think Doug has got you.
Oh, yeah. I would just say to you, things first is, in twenty-five years' time, it's always been like, well, see that when we present the budget, we use our budgets, still we present it, absolutely more budget. Uh, the policy of, you're at your, it's all, it's everything, but everything is appropriate in the budget, so. We can send them what we think is a good budget, our staff budget, and now, now those, that's everybody, you can approach the judge on the judge.
What do we have duty at fifteen percent?
That, that's the second thing I was gonna say, about, I certainly don't have an expectation of fifty percent next year. It's, it's the old cliche, but that means nothing, right?
Right.
So I think the first step is about the budget, then just the deficit. That's a great step in the right direction. Balance, you balance the budget, that's good, because all our philosophically, we appreciate that, we, we always say we right? So we won't likely, we spend, we will likely take in more revenue, that must sort of help on that.
I understand we can get there all year, right? Why would, like, the private, maybe three, years, maybe, you know, divided into thirds, or fourths, whatever, get up there. It's gonna make more money, more place for us. In the world, turn that, and make that. Twenty-year payment. Save the house.
So if the strategy, if you said, well, part of this, right, we're trying to get our purse, and we're trying to do a balance budget, which is paying first, of course.
So I don't know how hard it would be to do a budget with the mill levy staying the same? Reducing near the mills, you know how, we've done this all in the past, but just some options and what that looks like.
Yeah, you need to be certain that's a state that would really be possible, so.
I, so I was at the United Government Meeting about a week and a half ago and sat through three hours of one at a time residents discussing how they're being filled by the property taxes because the assessments have gone up year after year after year. Um, and then a miracle happened, the unified government voted to go revenue neutral. And so thankfully that gives their residents not tax relief for their property taxes, but they know that bill's not going up. Um, I think we don't wanna be um, completely blind to the fact that even though we've decreased the mill every year, our residents, just for their city bill and property tax, have increased year after year after year. And so I do wanna keep um, working toward tax relief, working for um, not taking everything and that you, you feel like, well, this might be the first time you've heard me say it, but a lot of people have heard me say this for six years probably in a row. It's just because our appraisal goes up, doesn't mean the government's entitled to more. And so um, that's why when, it, it's not a loss, when the, and I appreciate you saying that, that four hundred ninety-five thousand is not a loss because it's not the government, government's money, it's their money. You know, and, and so I like to start at that, which we're statutorily required to now, is starting at the revenue neutral point. And then we, then staff comes to us as the governing body and says, um, if, if we need more, how much is it and, and for what? And, and so we've heard some of that this evening, um, but I do wanna keep that in mind is, is just people have been feeling it and, and we've heard about that from some of our department heads this evening as well, with the cost of living increase, or people feel it every time you go to the gas pumps and grocery store. And so um, keeping that at the forefront of the budget process and saying if we can get as close to where we were without increasing taxes, but knowing we've got to make up some of the difference because of some unfortunate budgeting um, previously, and it makes me a little concerned because we've heard, some of us have heard every year that we're cautious or conservative on the revenue and um, you know, and conservative on the, or extra building in margin for the expenses. And then we found out that our, we violated our general, our finance policy, you know, and so um, that's what I think a lot of us want our general fund to be in a healthy place. Um, but like we said, I don't think it's realistic to think we can just hammer it out in one, one blow, so I appreciate that. Um, step by step analysis, but just keeping, keeping the residents in mind, I know a lot of, a lot of people are hurting financially and so we wanna take care of our staff, we take care of our residents and fight some battlegrounds.
Certainly some tough decision ahead. The elevation here, if we're not gonna make fifteen percent, it's gonna be something drastic to change, so. So, you know, we're targeting the best we can, we're not gonna give you a year in budget that says we meant fifteen percent. We'll try to push cash on hand, and hands are serious in the next year. Uh, we will regroup, certainly give you the scenarios. Driver suggested is somewhat similar to what we had at ABC last year. Saying, hey, either some options we can choose from, and if we can, I presented ABC if you recall, but we chose kind of a, maybe a B two, you know, kind of a, a different scenario then. So we can certainly work within that framework if you want, and so that's what we're hearing, you know, we go, being frank doesn't mean we're this bleak, we're in a good position, we just need to build one, right? So we're recovering from, we're doing just the opposite, folks. Revenues were overjected and expenditures were under again, we're doing the opposite. Right, we're not, other problems are over the best we can, that may be a dollar, right, one way or the other. So we're really trying our, I figure that at the same time, there's some priorities from the mayor, I'm there. And certainly our, our personnel is a priority, we're from a part of both, both choose things that we can do, help, right? And so, and we also heard once again, expert relief to the best that we could present that. Part of the governing body's goal, certainly we're aligned with that, and so we're gonna try to present all of that in some package that at least you can have commentary on, move forward and other considerations, but at the same time, look at these other funds and maybe what we can do with that. That's kind of the next step, unless you have more, that you want us to deliver. More detail, I hope we delivered that, talked about revenue neutral, what the reality of that, certainly if you load that weight, we can do something. Around the room, we decided that is somewhat devastating, but again, I think Mr. Gerber presented the reality is, it's zero. Number one, right, it's, you know, as neutral, that's really the, in the words of neutrality. If, I think we've met those somewhat priorities that you've said, we have, we want you to, yourself, so all your parents are.
No problem at all, um, I was just kinda looking through some notes that I um, contemplate budgets in my spare time, so um, one thing that I thought about, maybe we could look at doing is, especially in hearing some of our chiefs talk about retention and recruitment and how we're, we're having a hard time with those, that level of hiring is um, to strategically focus on longevity and focus on recruitment, but not necessarily um, having to do across the board in COLA, for example, um, milk has gone up substantially in the last couple of years. Whether you make sixty thousand dollars for Edwardsville or you make hundred thousand dollars for the city of Edwardsville, milk's still costing the same amount of money. So perhaps as for COLA, instead of a percentage, it could be a flat amount. And saying every employee will get an additional this amount of money instead of a percentage amount of money to cover COLA, um, it doesn't necessarily offset, uh, instead of somebody that, that makes a hundred thousand dollars getting six thousand dollars a year in a COLA, maybe they would get a little bit less, but then the person who's we're having a hard time with the recruitment and hiring level, um, it would supplement there and come a little bit more where they're usually pushed a little bit harder with the gas pump and the grocery store. Um, we might have to look at, we talked about the nine unit, for example, if we need to have more, more money in that budget to, to get more officers on board, we might need to look at holding off and pausing it for a little bit until we have a healthier fund balance to be able to do that and that we can recruit better and get those seats filled. Um, and then the special sales tax, I definitely uh, would love to see a prioritization of our parks and our public spaces and that, um, but is there a way that we can use some of the money, I think that's pretty healthy balance um, to offset some of the equipment needs that have been given to us in this budget? So it's not quite as hard to hit our general fund and our tax burden.
I think that's a priority of group, and we will certainly do that. There are all when you can make expenditures out of that fund. You want it out, that, that pays for ambulances, fire trucks specifically, maybe, maybe a public health department for younger. So that fund already has some commitments, good, we don't wanna overcommit that fund to those big ticket items. Right, so some of the things we did, particularly this year, Chief Witten and I worked, that we did have some funds for equipment. I believe it's for the government, but it was, they were not great day ticket items, but they were large enough that forty thousand dollars. That was simple, what's the wish, let's give you the priority, oh, by the way, let's, let's preserve our general fund and you're authorized, our government's authorized to spend from the special sales tax. So we, so we, as a strategy, allow to spend out of the special sales tax, but relieve some of the burden of the general fund. We can take that policy forward, it's just a matter of, we need to be careful, that needs to have some fund balance. By the way, you have already large ticket, you have to pay for, in addition, the parts of the power, and the second piece of that is streets. And there's nothing inexpensive about streets. So right now, we're committing a hundred thousand on a routine basis from that, of street programs. So there's, right there, you have three, four hundred thousand already, just you commit those. So again, that, that, it's not an unlimited fund, but it really is about the level of tax, sales tax collection, you'll have to buy things, so that we generate a fund, you know, revenues for that taken fund. So it's just a balance plan. But if that's priority of the group, certainly you can ship some of this stuff around where it might be amenable to everybody that this is the percentage we should spend and it beats us a ton of that, it does not have to.
Yeah, I was just trying to problem solve on them, on this little bit, because I wasn't expecting the number um, that we got tonight, so.
As a reminder, you're not final, we're just passing on to you to say, what would you like us to do? Maybe it's easier just, we have some ideas, we can, we can take all of this and, again, re-present it and say, these are your options, and maybe that's a little easier in consideration of these other funds and relieving some burden of the general fund.
I think that's true though. Given somebody that makes over a hundred thousand dollars, seven percent raise, I really do. In my business, I do step raises, you know, because I got people that make twelve dollars and I got people that make forty. And I give them, you know, different percentages. I just think that I agree with it. You got a guy over here in Brandon, fifty grand, seven percent raise, someone over here is making a hundred plus thousand, now it's seven percent raise. I know you work hard, but it's perception. Perception has a lot to do with morale too. Put the police, fire, the public works, all, you know, work with me.
And just coaching commentary here, is that the council path, step and grade system, I mean, technically the person that excludes is my official. So everyone else is in step and grade, in other words, step one, step two, to thirteen, and with the, with the way it was framed up, that every year you're moving one step higher, and that's a three percent step. So then when we talk about COLA, we have this, right, this framed up step and grade system. For COLA, you add three percent, the entire thing raises, this entire stepping rate system, you're adding three percent. Mayor may reference what we more call a stipend. And for example, in the step and grade system we used to have, it only had seven, five or seven steps. But once you got to that top step, you were getting stipend, because you couldn't get it, you were a step to go max out. And so they could pay a two percent stipend, one-time pay for that person who maxed out. So two percent, one-time pay, it didn't change your regular pay, it paid you one time, so that's a stipend. Kind of, you know, maximum stipend. So that's somewhat similar to what I think you were saying, that if we, if we don't honor the step and grade system, we have to make a change, if you adopted that, this council, the governing body adopted that step and grade system. So if you want something different, then we need to be commanded to do so, and bring you something different. It, it's not to say that you can't policy, that you want some sort of stipend in lieu of COLA, but the three percent is expected, if you don't fund it, right? It's expected, anything beyond the steps is somewhat a COLA. Unless you say eliminate the COLA, we're not adding, we're not raising the pay of this entire scale. We just want certain individuals who are here three, five, seven years or entry level or recruit, a stipend pay or something. But, but again, that's a day for discussion, we have to have a document before you, but it is a policy that this body was out for. That's been, I bet you, the second time we've done it, it was about three years ago.
It wasn't terribly long ago, but, but kind of to that point, is it was supposed to bring us to be competitive with our peers and once again, they're not, so I think it's not really doing what it set out to do. Um, in addition to that, it is um, I don't wanna call it a communist system, but when you're, when you are giving the same amount of an increase to someone who is a sick user, shows up late, isn't, and then the guy next to him, he's working his butt off and he's covering this guy's slack and he's getting the same raise every year? I just feel like we want the opportunity, it, it takes away the opportunity of management to incentivize a hard worker. And um, and so that's why I, I kind of like maybe looking at a different design to give our guys a little bit more opportunity for that morale, like you're doing a great job and, and management more controlled there. But on top of that, um, starting to incentivize more longevity and, and getting larger bumps at like a five year and not a ten year and things like that, so we're not recruiting constantly. Hopefully giving people some hope, hey, I'm gonna get a big bump in a few years, and keeping them on board because that cost of bringing in new employees is, is substantial. And so I, I do think it's probably a good idea that we really look at, um, if, if council thinks that's worth their time, but maybe looking at if COLA stipend or even if it's a monthly stipend, but instead of a percentage might, um, might help us out a little bit for this budget as well.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, what, what I, I think what you're describing is more of a merit-based system. And just as a note, you know, we're, you can set the budget of what you wanna spend on personnel without any consideration for the step and grade system. We can, we can make these changes, but you're gonna say, right, we can go to a different pay system, that's not the problem. But in the budget cycle, I don't know if we can be ready for that, that would reflect how we're gonna pay the employees because it takes some time to put together, we have to do the research, as you all know, coming from council, and but what we could do, not for labor, but we're gonna present you with, hey, the personnel will receive But we're going to present you with, hey, the personnel will receive this as appropriate, right, as, as is warranted, I think is the word that you use in, in that. So if we do move away from that system, we can adopt a different system, but, but in a budget allocation, the money is still there, it's just distributed in a different way to start.
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't talking about step and grade, not at all, I was talking about COLA. I wasn't saying that step and grade is fine, it's just the amount of COLA that, I guess, said, hiring these employees, getting seven percent, backing, I mean, the guy that rides on the back of the pump or, maybe whatever, he gets seven percent, I think, it's just, it just doesn't, I just don't like that system. I like the merit-based system better than anything, but then again, that costs, the risk, employees. But not with the pump and step, don't, you know, don't say that, because I don't, I'm okay with that. I was talking about the amount, seven percent overall, that's what I thought.
Yeah, no, that's, that's clear, I think, just a pair of this, is that in, in our step and grade system, about in the middle, we started, say, grade M, all the exempted employees are M to Z. And so we could apply a different COLA level, a number that's different to those than to those who are, what would be the, the non-exempt, the hourly employees? Is that kind of what you're suggesting, is that you have, you don't mind the step and grade? If, if I am captain and I'm in step four, you don't mind the step five, it's just the seven percent because the spare can pay from, from the pump or the driver or whatever it will be, you would let, rather see those folks receive a higher cost of living adjustment in COLA than the exempt people overall. Maybe that's a, maybe it's a two percent and maybe it's a seven percent, that may be a number we can throw out.
Or a flat rate, like a flat amount, not a flat rate, I shall say. But yes, I do think we need to look into longevity, because we don't really have that as, a, a couple of percent every single year, it doesn't really motivate longevity, because you get it, whether you're, you know, it, it doesn't give people that hope to stick around. And so that's something I think would be beneficial for re, not only recruitment, but retaining employees.
To finalize this, if that's okay. So should we be starting some effort to move away from the step and grade system, or should we look at ways to insert some of these suggestions? The COLA differences, maybe a, if you're here, by step seven, you get this one-time longevity stipend, those kinds of things?
I do not say, keep it in the step program. I do not say, I'm just saying the step and the COLA should be reevaluated. If that's.
Pretty close, yeah. I think this step, this step and grade, I'm not saying do away with it, I'm saying we need a budget for it, but we need to maybe tweak, it might be a needing, an adjustment. And I think it would be hard for us up here to make, to create a night like this is the direction. I think maybe you could bring back some suggestions for that. I don't know if we can keep step and grade how it is and do longevity, or if that needs to be tweaked. I just feel like we need to incentivize longevity and if that might be continuing a step and not a grade, or, I mean, it gets a little bit convoluted, but you can bring, whether that, we can deal with in the system, or if we need to, to change that to a more longevity in our departments would be helpful.
I think within the system that we have, we can do those. And I'm very happy. If you want to switch gears. Good?
Okay, that was item five. Moving on to item six, which is the city manager report, A B M C.
Mayor, thank you. Just to stay somewhat on task and normalize some of these discussions very quickly. The request is feedback as to what your preference is. I don't know is that, I think these have been presented this way in the past, but it is about the governing body, the council for sure, their amiability to offering IRB, industrial revenue bond, this, this would be a pilot. This is for the Basma company, their expansion, it's fifty thousand square feet, is what they're proposing, thirty million dollar investment, pretty significant. If you think of the big building that exists there now, think of another, so that's kind of, yeah, it's a pretty big investment. Their request is fifty percent, they would pay a fixed pilot for ten years, and that is consistent with what we've done with them before, they have two of them already, so this will be a third one. And essentially, if you're amenable to that, the next steps would be, cost analysis would be prepared, and we would have to conduct public hearings, all the same stuff that you're used to. And then we would have a resolution of intent, issue those industrial revenue bonds, and then the, and then that pilot would be in date. Now, they have a twenty-eight expiration date already and a twenty-twenty-nine expiration for their IRBs existing, so that's, those would, those would tend to expand. Their, their other expansion was the automation piece that goes over the gas pipe as well. So if you see that kind of a conveyor belt and the building, this building will be near there, right, right in that same area, and again, it'll be fifty dollars per. So really the question is, are you comfortable with these particular terms that are consistent with city policy? Right now, there's an escalator of one point five percent of the pilot they do pay, meaning they pay a hundred, say it's two hundred and thirty-five, in, in that span, they only end up with two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars paid. So, right, that's painted in blue passes. And so it isn't, it isn't uncommon that we do this, this is a request of a spare economy. I'm just looking for some quick feedback, if you want me to commission legal counsel to move forward with putting all this together and then getting you off.
We just voted on that, done the last four or five things.
Yes, I agree. They, they kind of on our ten-year rotation, so it certainly, pretty aggressive advice. So if there's some amiability, we'll, we'll just move forward. They, they don't want to invest a lot of time and effort, and they'll be wanting to mission a bond council to do a lot of work if there's some existence. But again, this has been very beneficial to us in the past. You know, look back ten years ago, we started one and thought, actually, look back, right, ten years, right, we just keep doing that, and the industrial park, except for these kinds of expansions, fairly full, now what's left is about six point four acres in that day. It's been very beneficial.
They're not going anywhere either, are they? They're a multinational company.
My goodness, yeah. Yeah, they're expanding more and almost doubling their size, they're really committed to that. They manufacture, they distribute, oh, by the way, they have retail. So, I mean, if they're the wish list, we certainly have with this group, and they've been really good partners. Okay, I will move forward unless there's somebody. That was at their press party, sorry, they just don't want to do a bunch of work, they spent a lot of money on that. That was a little unusual.
Do we get reimbursed for the attorney costs on it?
Oh, I, do they, in May, they here won't make, yes.
Oh, gee.
I don't know, I've done one since last, there's, there's first round for everything, folks. Oh, yeah, good counsel gives us a little buzz, right? Next, please, Mayor. Sorry for all the little words. This is Ninety-Eight Street, phase two. Let's start with, the design originally matches phase one. Sidewalk, multi-purpose trail, curb and gutter, a very wide, big project, right? It's pretty substantial, right? So the concern was the impact of right-of-way acquisition, but more so, you have to think of grading. Notice how the road, you know, ebb and flows, height, valleys, peaks, and a number of the impacted houses is from grading, not the right-of-way acquisition, right? And so to, the request was, how do we make this better, more amenable to less right-of-way acquisition, number one, and less impacted to, to the homeowner? We don't, we're not taking a property either through just construction design or formally by buying right-of-way, okay? So we have about four properties along that in which, by the time we take the right-of-way and grade it, it's twenty feet to the face of their house. It's not, not good, okay? Now that's, again, where do they build the house? We're adjacent to the current road and the expansion, that's why. So there's only four, but, but it's four, right? And that's, that's four too many, in my opinion, for that, for that impact. Now, if you, you realize, we, we pay twenty percent of the cost, this is federally matched, up to four, a little over four million, almost four point one million, right? Right now, the estimates are around that seven million mark to the goal. If you recall, on phase one, it was substantial, I would say substantial. We were joyous at the, at the close, and the, and the estimates, the estimates were very high, COVID really drove that up, but we had a great price. And we think we can certainly get into that six million range, which would be about, you know, twenty percent over, over four million, okay? So we propose removing, to lessen the impact, remove the sidewalk, just take it out and see what that does. And unfortunately, each property owner, by just that mechanism, only gains a few feet. There's several reasons. Number one, it's still curbing down the road, it's still as wide as it is, and we, that's, that's not really the notion. Now, if we take the sidewalk out, this was done through federal funds, right? How you get those is through the S T P committee, right? They, they evaluate, score your projects, and that's through the Mid-America Regional Market, okay? And so we've had several of these projects, you know, through the years, we have our Town Center Connector sidewalk project, S T P, there's a number, Ninety-Eight Street Absolute is, is one of those, and we have S T P funds for the router, just to make it simple. So we have to go back to them and ask for a design change, which is how we scored, is we had a sidewalk, and we had a multi-purpose trail, and we had curb and gutter on a standard, right, spec of, of a street, curb and gutter all those. So our score line, we were, we scored above the fund line, but it's close. So the risk you run by going to the committee, and that will be, our first opportunity is in August, is that they restore it and they say, will we use the fund or we'll take the fund, right? And that has happened. And we also know that a change has been approved by other communities and they, they left the funding in place. It just really is, is, is about the question and that sort of thing. But did it impact future projects, right? And our future project, right now, on the table, is Ninety-Eight Street, Ninety-Eight Street. What I'll say about that particular phase, there's even more of this kind of grading and right-of-way taking. There's a number of houses in that phase three, and phase three is, think of K-32 north to the new metropolitan circle, right, where they're building the roads, towers. So that would be the phase three, there's more houses that are even closer. So this would be, well, that would be darn creative, or, or to skip this kind of big, big, big road. So we face a scoring and a funding risk, if you will, not only for this project, a maybe a huge project, and that is, the staff says absolute, these things can be variable. But of course, we, we, if, if removing the sidewalk really did something for these property owners, we would be immediately going with it. But the reason you're having, we're having this talk right now, is the alternative that we, we have devised, we set through W I R, engineers and their, their project management staff, they went back to the drawing board and redesigned, right? So it still needs specifications, and we actually improved the amount of ground, we built the yard of these, by template, these property owners. We keep the sidewalk in. So think of a sidewalk, think of a sidewalk, you drive by, there's lots of green space between the sidewalk and the road and that sort of thing. When it comes to this template, if you will, that we move the sidewalk to the curb, the sidewalk may be four or five feet wide, it may be is that we make that six feet wide in those particular areas, and there's a, there's a retaining wall, right? If you think of a three-to-one slope, in most of these houses that are impacted, they have somewhat of a sheer cliff, right? Because there's this high, they're, they're high on this hill, well, they can't use this space anymore, their yard is, that's not usable. What we would propose, if the grading continues, however, we build a retaining wall and they actually gain this usable ground. Does that make sense visually? We still three-to-one slope, we have to grade it towards the road, but the wall then, if you go to Ninety-Eight Street in Kansas, you'll see a similar wall, we've done this before. And so that's the first piece, and a template like that, move the sidewalk in, erase or eliminate some of the green space. That's, that's the key, is this thing that's really wide at the end of the property, because four foot of mowing space, you know, another two feet and all the associated, we still maintain the right-of-way, but we shift where there's, where there is a conflict, if you will, about how far the right-of-way goes into their property, that's what we can do. We just only acquire the necessary right-of-way that the utilities fit in to the sidewalks. We move that from anywhere from four to eleven feet, right? And then we put a wall up and then they gain this space. Every one of these, if we just overlay it with a, a visual of it, their yard is going to be better, there's going to be more space for them to use its usable space. So we thought that if we make this a template of, in these particular ones that are twenty foot or less, there's a less in there, that from facing to the house, by the time this all said that we left it as it was, that they would gain another, almost more than ten feet in some cases, that especially the most impacted one, the one, the house that was impacted, would gain ten foot, not just one little area, but the whole, the whole front facing of their house. Now, some of it's not much of an impact, though it says less than twenty feet, but all of their usable space that they use by design is behind this house, even though it's Ninety-Eight Street, right? They, they access it from a different place, right, and then they come in from behind. So those are the things, some of them may be considered, but we shouldn't have more than a four-foot wall, then the grading is smooth, easy. You ever rode on a three-to-one slope, you know, or hay, hay to field, you know, on an international tractor? I digress, but that, it's even three-to-one, that's a pretty good slope, but it could be smooth, however, we can eliminate that by doing this. Step one, redesign the sidewalk to come in, right? If someone snakes around, we lessen the right-of-way taking, right, several feet, and we eliminate the green space, so we can do that, and then you add the retaining walls, that then gives them more yard space and quite frankly, an overall less taking by, by example. But that ensures that we have, we don't have to do anything more, we just say, engineers, design, can we do the field check, K dot, all this, we do all this stuff, we submit it, and really the scope of the project stays the same, funding is as it is, and it kind of gives us a design about maybe how to approach it in the future. I think on phase three, not to digress too much, but on phase three, that we may need to consider a whole different approach to that. This design, we, we just simply even couldn't do this, right? It's a very wide road, standard wide, but then a lot of right-of-way taking, I just think it's going to be much more difficult. It may be something more local project, it may not match completely, but it may be worth us funding ourselves, just put that out there. But, but we had to apply for our funding from the phase three, just to see where we scored, and then have you decide on how we should approach it. I think we would be doing a disservice not to apply for the funding, so that's more. I, I, no S T P review, we don't have to go to the mark, homeowners gain more usable land, we've seen the plan, we've talked to the plan, and I think they've done their due diligence here, and we would approach each homeowner and say, this is how we plan to, you know, make it right for you. But that would have to be. Feedback discussion?
What's the worst-case scenario for a homeowner? You said it was less than.
Less than twenty foot.
So with this better-case scenario, how far is the sidewalk from their front door?
Well, now, they're already sitting close to the road, the, the worst-case scenario, it's a seven-up law. They, they have some of the sidewalks of their drive, so that, some of that, it's going to happen, we're going to reposition driveways and do some of that heavy loading that's part of the design, but they, they will gain usable space all the way somewhere to, they call it back to curb, right to that sidewalk, they have this yard, retaining wall, and their yard will be smooth now, they have some usable space, if they throw the ball, drop it on the road, right? So we will gain that, I don't know square footage exactly how that number is, but, but it was a, we can present it to them and then we would show them, they gain a number of feet, right? And, and really, again, it's about this grading that we have to do, right? Right now, it's here, this is what taking, think about that. It's not that we have this line, we're going to put utilities in there, it's, now we can do this and level this thing out and they get more usable space. We don't have to mount, they have a sidewalk, one particular has a sidewalk, it goes to their driveway, we don't have to modify that, and they don't have to open their side door and step out into a sidewalk or a curb. Really puts some distance, based on the drawing and the design that we've been presenting. It really does, yeah. It really does, yeah.
How much additional does the retaining wall cost?
Cost-wise, we don't think it changes the terms that we would have to commit anyway. Twenty-eight is there, the engineer estimate was over seven million total, we think it's going to come in way less than that, so there wasn't really a cost factor that's so significant that we're like, oh, business, drives them a living life, not at all. This was a change that they made on Ninety-Eighth Street, those walls are there because they said, hmm, we probably ought to put a wall, right? So, they did that as kind of a strategic change, change order, as they went through the project. And now, if you understand, Ninety-Eighth, Phase One, also includes that on the trail side, they're building walls just partially back behind the long side of that trail because of the elevation changes, right? So, they keep that, keep that, so they don't have to grade so much to pay the property, and it's cheaper, and they're going to put that retaining wall all along that, where it's necessary, especially on the north end, from River View, Ninety-Eighth North, that requires some, two-to-four-foot retaining wall, just depends, but it was, it is cheaper than the grading, leveling out the property, and quite frankly, we'd have to take all highway. This is very similar.
How wide's this street, gutter to gutter?
Same, it's the same with that, so you have a sixty, and then you have eighty, right? It's just on the right-of-way acquisition of things, but they're every bit of twelve, twelve-foot lanes, so thirty, yeah.
Thirty foot from curb to curb?
From curb to curb, yeah.
And I think going forward, and I know there's always so much people who want to be submitted a project, but I feel like our residents really want streets that are functional for our community, and I've heard from multiple, like, we don't need highways, you know, we don't need Chinese car weight going down Ninety-Eighth Street. And so, if you talked about the internalized designs moving forward, I don't think we need to continue putting in programs with a sidewalk and a multipurpose trail and thirty feet wide streets, we want to be able to pass safely and drive safely on the roads. That's the main thing. I did have one question, if we submit this with a change to the STP, say we take the sidewalk out to try to give the people that four to six feet of more space, and then they say, we lost enough, which, you know, some communities have done this, and it's working fine, but they say, now we won't fund it, then can we say, okay, with the sidewalk, will you fund it if we do it? Or is it just a want it done?
No, I don't know that answer. This is the one that I should say, I don't know. And figure that, because we'll just have to ask them that question. I do think that, you know, there's nothing, you know, right, but they scored, a group like yourselves scored this, said this is, meets all criteria of these kind of pedestrian mobility, street specification, and they say, okay, you met this checklist, and we're competing with other communities around, right, for this pot of money. And so, I, we submitted in good faith, they used the word specifically to establish a maintenance switch, that's what they call this type of thing, we don't want to be in the practice of doing it. And so, we'd already submitted the kind of a review for Phase Three, but that doesn't mean we have to accept. It's really when, that kind of connotation comes, when we accept that if we start to do all these, and then we get the money, and oh, by the way, we're just, we're probably bad. When it becomes time that we make a decision to formally apply, right, we apply for scoring consideration to move forward for funding on Phase Three. Now, at that point, we could say, we withdraw. It's that simple, and it doesn't hurt us in any way. It's not this kind of, I'm sorry to give you, but that's kind of the word to use in the switch. So, we don't want to get into that, but could we easily in Phase Three? I wouldn't say easily, but could a curved road be there, or a full road replacement in some form or another, without all the overbuild, without the pedestrian, could the city do that themselves? And the answer is yes, just spend the nine-one's favorite money, nine-one, and is that, that two years from now? I don't think so. I think it's three to five, easily, pretty easy.
Well, and that's why I would try to avoid is the maintenance switch appeal, thinking we're coming in with one and changing it, but instead, let's change our template design so it doesn't include thirty foot from curb to curb, and it's not a sidewalk and a multipurpose trail. You guys have all been advocating for sidewalks in connections within our city, however, we also have to look at the long-term maintenance, because it's not an eighty, twenty grand at that point, it's a hundred percent on the taxpayers here. And so, when we're looking at a ten-foot multipurpose trail, a six-foot sidewalk going down the same, same road, then I'm going, okay, in ten years, who's fixing that concrete? It's going to be all of us. And so, that's why I'd like to change what we're submitting, I mean, go by, that's fine, let's change what we're submitting in the first place, so we're not caught changing that template later after we already applied.
Based on the criteria, these were submitted like they are, based on that particular criteria, so we get the score. Without all these elements, and that's how you get the money, that's how you get the score, right? They're saying pedestrian mobility, multipurpose trail, oh, by the way, you got a sidewalk, I don't know why they got that too, right? And then here's the road, so that's what they're saying, okay, that matches all these federal standards, if you will, and that's how you get the score. But in the end, there may be some other programs that we can apply for, that don't have all these other elements, we just have to go find out what they got.
And then we may have a lower score and still get the grant, but coming in...
Because the criteria...
Yeah.
Yes. So, what I would recommend is number one, that we secure the funding. We haven't signed this particular document yet, though there was a council action that we moved forward with this project, so we need to secure the funding to actually look at, we need to submit that, because we can always work backwards from there, right? We don't have to dig funding, we don't want, but we're saying, hey, the award is earmarked for this to the, we shouldn't sign that document, based on their recommendations, as I mentioned. This, what we'll do is, this specifically addresses four properties that are standard one, it's consistent with the design of the Phase One. So, we're going to have a consistent road, it's going to end at Metropolitan Circle, where there's going to be the new houses. So, there is some, I guess, array of light, that you're going to have a trail and sidewalk that, where you're going to have a housing addition, right? Conceptually, it still fits with what we're doing with sidewalks on Ninety-four Street, what we're doing on Richmond, for example, we're going to have a sidewalk there that ties into Kansas, that goes to Ninety-Eighth, up north and south. So, I think there is some consistency to that, that we can surely fix it for the property owners, and we'll describe to them exactly what we have in each one of them, we have planned, when that kind of comes. Now, what we did, so we have some decisions on it, not fully, but we asked KDOT, we don't need any other review, we asked KDOT to extend the LET of this project to the 2026 summer, which is July, and then it would be LET awarded in September, similar to the timeframe of Phase One. LET July, awarded in September, that. So, where are two years...
I'd say, if they also homeowners have gained more ground, because that, remember when we did Hundred Ten Street up there, we had that little wall right there, just where you could move it in, and it wasn't very tall, and the over is plain, and they came back with that little corner, it's easier to move now, it's less.
I think we had a similar situation on Kansas, I mean, something, something you can change, sort of attention of some sort. We could work on this possibility.
It's really important that we keep this away from front doors.
Totally agree with that. I didn't think that it was worth presenting, I can go to the Mark Ward, and there's some risk, we could, I don't want to commission the engineers to do any more work of making these changes if they're not interested in it. But I do think it's a reasonable solution, without any other of the bureaucracy of these other entities telling us what we should do. Or not, or denying this in some way.
We don't have to spend a million dollars, we're only going to get it, man. It's going to be in probably two million, two and a half, man.
Anything else you need from us?
No, I will, we will proceed. Thank you. Facilities, thank you. The fire department, highlighted in here, the roof and the water, okay? We did, it's, meth is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. Our construction management team, and Pika Williams, who's our architect, sent out their expert, meth expert, to the fire department, because we have commissioned them to move forward on a remodel, expansion, all of this stuff. And what we know absolute, the roof is a complete disrepair. What comes through a roof in this, in disrepair, wiring, right? It's water back or buildings. Also, there's water in and routinely in the basement, and it stays there, even with the sump pump that they put in, that's not helping, okay? I'm concerned about this, and I'm sorry I wasn't alerted to this, all right, because we've done something. Our people, they live there, right? It's not coming in for a few hours a week. So, they're confident that gold has kept out at least in the basement, but that doesn't mean it doesn't create from humidity and things like that. There is a drain on the side of the building that's actually kind of built into the building that leaks water right into the basement. So, when it comes off the roof, we do not know if that pipe, if you will, that gutter spout is broken, because it'll need to be scoped, okay? But it very well may be okay, and if the water's flowing through it, it's just not going out into the yard, because guess what? Where it flows to is a hill, like a little slope, right? And so, it's cooling right there, and it's going right into their basement. The one thing could be is that it's broken, it's filling down the wall. So, there's a couple of things that we have to do around commissioning that right-of-way. We got to get somebody to figure out what we need to do. Now, they came out to say, hey, how can we help you move this water? And so, they have a quick design, of course, they're going to make some suggestions for us on how to maybe pipe the water out, away from the building as much as possible. But again, there's a little bit of concrete patio, there's hill, there's, you know, even just a slight slope toward the parking lot, it's going to be a little challenge, however, we need to do something to move the water away, okay? We don't want it in the basement, even if there's a sump pump up there. The way that's designed is deliberately putting, somehow, putting water right there. The next piece of the roof, it's in terrible, terrible shape. It's, this has probably been in discussions down to my level prior to my July, and that year, but now that I know more about it, it's come to the forefront, but I took it out of the general fund, it's two-hundred-plus thousand to fix that thing. Should we get a piss roof of some sort? Yes, you can't do that for two-hundred thousand. Should the membrane be replaced? Yes, on both the main level, and there's a secondary. Where we pay for that is out of the Town Center Fund. There's plenty of funds there, we haven't spent to the level that was projected anyway from our architect and our construction management, and it's been included in the Town Center project, no matter what, whether that comes for portion or not, so we're authorized to spend those funds out of that, money out of that data fund, and we should commission this right-of-way. If this is leaking to the bump room, this is getting on our equipment, I mean, right, rust, you know, it's a blue mark. I fully recommend that we proceed, that we go out, get some seal bids from roofers that do flatterings similar to what they did here, of course, and then we'll coach this up, we'll coach this up on, you know, kind of the standard, you know, going around. So, that's really, that's really that piece of it, I know that's long-winded, the fire remodel concept, the north side consideration. I know in a picture, they said, here's a square, they go to the north side, and then they also talked about the south side. If you build on the south side, you don't have opportunity to expand your bay. And why that's important is a bay expansion may be necessary in the next three to five years, and you don't have to build a north station, but maybe that's not warranted yet. So, you're talking seven million, or maybe five-hundred thousand, maybe that's the difference, right? So, you somewhat landlocked yourself into that building by putting it on the south side. All the utilities are on the north side, that sort of thing, and, right, if you don't recall, for five years, I was a fudge, and I spent a lot of time to build it. So, when we conceptualize, we talk about it amongst the coffee, you know, that water cooler, we talk about an expansion fund on the north side. And so, that's, I kind of drifted that conversation to them, and that's why. If we do build, and we can build on the south side, that's fine, but what I'm suggesting to you, we, there may be an opportunity that we need another apparatus, maybe another man goes or something, some other wildland fire vehicle, whatever, that we could, less expensive than a whole new station, maybe we're not ready for that yet, but we, if we build the quarters, the living quarters on that south side, that would, we would not be able to add a bay. We would have, we could expand maybe to the west, but that's even more difficult, we have to change how the approach is and some of that other stuff, but it can be done. But my suggestion is that we focus on, we need costs on both, both ends, the north and the south, and we've asked them to do that, but one of the cost drivers is the utilities on the, on the north side. They're against the wall, they have a design that kind of humped around that, we don't recommend that, only because those, every bit of thirty years old, of what those are good issues, those are, we should, that should be on our budget request, things like that we should say, ah, you know, right? That's, this is the time if you look for them. So, the two-in-one building concept is in full swing, we do have a meeting coming up very soon about what they're proposing, the walls, wall, and that. One of the most important bullets here is the education strategy, right? You can go out and campaign, the staff cannot, we just educate. We don't have kind of the capacity, some of the expertise on how to design all this, in the sense of how we educate the public. It's not just Facebook, it's just not a word here, we have to have a strategy, right, on how to communicate on a regular basis, because this needs to be somewhat, people we educate on, it's not just a tax question, it's not just these things, right? It's, and we have some moving parts, we not only have a barn, but we have asset sales desk, and oh, by the way, there's another asset sale desk, right? This is pretty complex in some ways. So, what we need to do is look at some profession, some service that does this kind of work, or just bring them in, and how we pay for that, there's about sixty-five thousand dollars in what we call a community improvement fund. This was a fund established years and years ago, because certain projects, they didn't well account for, and I'm talking twenty, twenty-five years ago, like bonded projects. So, there was this leftover money that we wanted, we had to park somewhere. So, they called it the Community Improvement Fund, and that money has been there for some years now. And so, there's money, no other way to expend it, but a community improvement, this would certainly be that, well-aligned with that, where that fund is, and we're proposing not to exceed ten thousand, so if you can find somebody who will bill us, time and material, to help us design webpages, social media campaigns, as well as any other, hard billboards, for example, the hard signs, that sort of thing, and the education campaigns that you will receive, that you could pass out to your friends and neighbors and all that sort of, and, you know, if you have something to make your conversation base on, right? And then those would be also mailers, so a whole strategy that we would have somebody that, number one, we're in the middle of budget season, we have to prepare for our election, we have to do all these things, we just don't have the capacity to do it, and we're not that creative, and we may talk about it here, we're just not, that's not our field, and we don't have anybody in term of... So, that's what we were proposing, not to exceed, I do have that spending authority, but certainly I want you to be apprised of that, I just think if we're going to do it, we're going to commend ourselves to the investment that we've already had, that we, that we go and say, not to exceed ten thousand, we hired the right firm to go do that, and we already had on our radar, to look at our architect firm, to see what they might be able to offer in addition to their contract now, it would be added, because it's not within their scope of work, but they may be very good with this, so that's one avenue.
Have we agreed on the remodel for the fire station?
We have, we have, I think there was at least agreement to have them design.
To look and see how much was done, oh.
Absolutely. They put some, they put three-point-six million with contingencies, solid cost and contingencies, three-point-six million dollars. So, eighteen million, let's back up a little bit, it sounds like eighteen million dollars is the all-in. Slide away, we're talking eighteen million, with a sixteen-million-dollar investment for the two million of our own money, and sixteen for the fire station remodel, and the two-in-one building, which we will have some progress on, very soon, there's going to be an update meeting and that sort of thing, and we will share that information with you, as soon as we know, and certainly will invite our architect back, our construction manager back to present that, but I understood, I thought very clearly, that we have commissioned them to spend another ten thousand dollars to design, concept design, the two-in-one building, so we have a picture to present, here's what you're paying for, and that they were coming with some strategies for the remodel. And that concludes this meth onsite review that they've already done. So, eighteen million, and then that sixteen million from the bond. So with 18 million, we're going to invest 16 million in the bond proceeds, paid for by asset sales backs, special, and asset general. We have been presented with a language, I've had some feedback, we have other ideas, we just have to legally vet any of your ideas, that's all. Just the language change. Make sure we catch your call.
To go back to the roof in the water, um, I'm hoping maybe we can, instead of just the phone call, that we could do a public bid on those procedures, especially the, something that's expensive, will be good to get some public bids in the water, uh, that I've seen, uh, more at a residential level. But bids to mitigate water are drastically different from one contractor to the next because people get so scared of these sort of basic issues, and they know they've got you over a barrel, and you can charge whatever you want. And so, especially on that piece, you get to get several.
The mitigation is being provided by the experts. They're going to, they're giving us somewhat a plan of how to approach this. And so we'll have specifications from the fire partners. They're going to give us a plan and say, this is how you bid it. And then we're going to say, bid on this. So it's not something we have to create, they've already inspected it. And it quite frankly could mitigate itself by just that part of the water.
That's kind of, and I think Councilman Bishop probably has some knowledge on this too, that I'm just thinking, fix the speaking gutter, put in a French drain and pump it out.
Yeah, do that speak, just cut that open thing off or double, and put it down in the park. Thought you had a bid.
Chief Wilton will give you a. It's not that easy, it's not that easy. But we will have a plan, and that will be based on what, again, things in the wall, it's, could be broken inside. There's a number of factors that we have to consider. So these folks are done with you, they're going to provide us a specification document, and then if we need to go off the bids, we can do so. Anything over 10, something like $250,000 is a seal bid. We will put it on the contractor website, and we'll put it on our website and link it to this, holding Dex, Dex from under Dex, contractor site that they all go to for these type of projects. Same as our roads, that's where we put this. We will do that.
And then I think we talked about maybe posting the link to that on our webpage. If people don't check it, they don't check it, there's only so much we can do.
We're never, with our road projects, we always have five to seven, on the racing buses, that's pretty good. We're doing, we're putting it where it's seen.
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
What are we going to go and do?
Councilman Muller, anything first to me?
I understand you're the one for it, though. Good job.
Councilman Bishop?
I'd like to get the documents tonight emailed over, so I can sit and study them better than just getting presented after the meeting. And from now on, even the next step, the next step, I can sit down and study.
Very quickly, we don't, we're not putting those out there, we want to talk about them here, this is a good way for you to have explanation, and then you get, I like this part.
After, yeah, after you just said, I don't want it before. Okay, thanks, totally.
Councilman Muller?
The director here, I've had some requests from citizens about possibly putting up some, let's say, the word Christmas decorations somewhere. We used to have them up and down the 43rd, there's some requests, some about holiday, Christmas, whatever. I have a hard copy. And that's the thing, are we in the process of getting another K-NOT officer?
The officer has, according to the chief, grants win, that they went through the process and they had competitive officers put in, and it was a competitive process, they had selected someone who would be the next handler, should the program exceed. So, again, we paid a deposit of $1,000 to reserve our place in that training, and then at that training, that's where they selected us, which is exactly the pattern we followed before. Uh, I will say as a note, that drug seizure money is paying for this, not general fund. And it's already budgeted, and we already have the vehicle. Yeah, so the program is well placed, so to go backwards would be easier to go on that. This is one of the best PR programs we've ever had, as a first note. Second, is, we have $1,000 in our seizure fund because of the work of this dog. And the partnerships that our K-NOT program has established over the years are priceless, like frankly. We've had so much help and partnerships, and quite frankly, we worked in your neighborhood to help seize a lot of fentanyl. We got bad guys off the street, we got drugs off the street, and not just for the whole community, but they also helped us in return. So I think those are very beneficial. $21,000, sorry, $21,000 is about what our investment is. We have better than $35,000 in our drug seizure fund. It's a little reserved, so we can use that for our community events, which we have, whether the chief proceeds with that. But we'll use those drug seizure funds for the water fest that we have, the ice cream we sell, or giveaway, quite frankly, our best, those sorts of things. We're going to continue. Unless the chief, correct? Sorry, favor.
Now, our favor. Steve, you're going to have Steve Wilton. On the report that you gave on automatic dispatch, is that, it looks like we're given lots, are we giving in return the same that we're giving, it looks like, you know, when you're saying you're giving the Bonner 12, and you're receiving eight? Is this pretty accurate what you were expecting?
Yes, it's, yes, I mean, it's never going to have been exactly 50/50, one for one, this for that. It's exactly along the parameter lines that we thought, because we sat almost exactly right in between the major deficit of the western end of Kansas City, Kansas, and the Bonner Springs. If you compared that to a year ago, we have cut our response to Bonner Springs by about 65%. But we have had an increase in the covering the western end of Kansas City, Kansas, from about 57th Street to 108th, 109th up off of State Avenue, which is one of the areas that Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department is weak at. Now, the biggest thing about our number of responses to Kansas City, Kansas, besides 10 fires, the majority of them have been transportable EMS calls that we are billing for the revenue side for. So i- in reality, it has increased our call volume by about 105 calls, um, to where we were at over this time last year. But nothing in that is alarming to me at all as to where we thought we were going to be overall. It is not a huge disparity to where we thought, we knew we were going to have a major decrease to our number of calls that we were being called upon to Bonner Springs. It was disparate, uh, we did know we were going to have some increase to KCK. But then again, also at the same time, we still do run two ambulances out of here because we are deducting our crews down to cover for that. Now, we're not doing it near as much as we are in the past, but we still run both of our crews out most of the times before we call for help to come into here. And our calls for help have been more on to 435 severe traffic accidents and fires compared to just general 911 ambulance calls.
Here is, I'm just looking at the differences in the, in the, how you're going to. Is there any way we can contact KDOT having to do something coming up on, on the 435 races? Like that's breaking.
If you recall, we were at a presentation with a secretary of the opposite, telling me, I specifically ordered them and said, if you help with the deteriorating medians and anything to do with that bridge structure, we're going to find just half of us, not collapse. In the sense, let's clean this up, and, uh, have his assistant, who was there, take my information, submit it to that. I think we've talked to the highest, other than saying to the governor, we've talked to the highest person that we could talk to, luckily. But as, they also prioritize and have local policies on how they address things. Some of it is permanent, grass, the, the, yeah. Talking about sidewalk, I can't go without a meeting with that fancy, that Capitol General, access to the Capitol General. We're talking about sidewalks all over, let's see if we can get it. At this point, go with that, I would like to have an awesome process, to figure out what the. Archifilms, I think, I don't know, yeah, that's, again, moving to base two, that finished out.
From our residents out down there, they're same consideration, that's what it's up for. I rise down there with the older wheelchair, people want that transportation, that's the only means of survival, that's all we're doing. Think we will, yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Councilman Trump?
Um, I too would like to thank all the department heads for presenting tonight a top to top. Doug and Mark, know a lot, or present to this, a lot of. Basically, a lot of, so, thank you all, a lot of insight. Um, I do have a question for Brian or comment. Couple of residents told me that cemetery was mowed, when it was too wet. There's pretty bad ruts there.
That is true, it was mowed when it was wet, they're scheduled to mow on Wednesdays. There was actual funeral that they had to postpone to go to Wednesday, big rain came in, the next day was for Thursdays. I've inspected the area twice, um, do not find any huge ruts in there. Maybe one small one that was where a rear tire went over a cremation burial, um, that I basically just walked back in with my foot. Other than that, there's a little bit of grass, wet grass that was blown on headstones, and white lawn care came out the next day and blew those off after the fact.
There's some kind of understanding as far as you want up there to do it regardless of how wet it is, I don't know. I think it's a bit about it, I mean, I guess it's a great area. Do we really want to cut to where they're going to mess up the land, or?
I don't think that it was every, at any time was it detrimental to tearing up the land, um, in those conditions. I mean, with the hills, the front ditching out there, if it's wet, they can't mow that. I mean, with the dips, so, I mean, I don't think that there ever was. They, they're on a schedule, um, to be there. We ran a conflict because they should have been there Wednesday, um, so they were back up, trying to catch back up on it. But I didn't see any, anything that was really detrimental that, that I didn't see anywhere else, um, out there.
Didn't appear there was any permanent, but certainly when you mow a lot of wet grass, you kind of leave the tire track, it's going to be. So as soon as it dried out, we inspected it, and we didn't think that it was permanent, and surely they could use that to judge that it was really wet. It would be bloody.
Right, we want to cut this.
I think that after we have like four inches of rain.
Who would have been next today? And now, pretty, yeah.
So I was just wondering, like, if they mow in that situation, in a wet situation, would they not mow?
When that got up in my, I didn't, I.
If you were looking at the policy, pardon me, if you were looking at the policy, anything?
Well, it sounds like.
Contractions, they damaged it. That's probably what we went out and looked.
Right.
We felt it was more grass tracks, you know, from the tire, and that as soon as it dried out, the sun came out, covered the cover. So there was only, there was very limited damage, if you will.
Perfect.
Hmm?
Councilman, okay. Um, I said I would respond to a public comment earlier today, why do we do public comments at the beginning of the meeting? And, um, the reason being, if we voted on things before the public comment, then you would miss an opportunity to give us your feeling on that item for the vote. So if we moved public comments down to item five, but we're voting on four things above that, then you would miss the opportunity to tell us how you feel about the item before we vote on it. And so that's, that's the reasoning behind that, but I can chat with you a little bit more, I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget. Um, wanted to thank department heads for giving us a budget, uh, planning this evening, that's something new, um, that, uh, that I appreciate, I think it helps us see the needs of the different departments, and to hear from you guys individually. I know that we already run a free tight ship, and appreciate all that you do, so thank you for that. Edwardsville Mobile Pantry is coming up Saturday, this Wednesday is the last day to sign up for this particular event. So if you know families in need in our area, um, that could use a little help of getting some extra groceries, sign up online. It's on the City of Edwardsville Facebook page, or you can cross the hall if you need to. Thanks so much, have a great evening.